I want to, in reference to a special meeting, in reference to the selection of a council member to replace Joe Baca, who still has two years left. On my mic, who has two years left on it, so the interviews will be conducted. I'll have the, the, the way that it'll be done, and then I'll have the attorney explain how it will be done. But at this point, we'll start with the pledge allegiance. It will be led by Ed Correo. Would you all please stand? Please your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point.
I have Pastor Bryden here to do the.
Our heavenly Father, once again, I bring to you this council meeting, the members, the leaders of the city. I pray, God, you'd endow them with wisdom and knowledge and understanding, Father, how to navigate through process through decisions they're gonna make tonight. Lord, in some decisions may not be favorable, Lord, God may be honorable and pleasing. So, Lord, guide their minds and spirit, Father, that the person they select, Lord, will be one that will fulfill the duties of serving the city in a way that brings continuity and strength to the city. Again, Father, bless this council meeting tonight, all those present, and all those applying. Let your name get glorified. This is my prayer in Jesus's name. Amen.
And Mayor, before we go further, just let me let the record reflect. That this is a meeting for, a special meeting for January the seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. And I'm gonna just list that, who is present, which is yourself, Mayor Baca, Mayor Protem Carriseldes, Councilmember Scott, Councilmember Perez. We have the City Treasurer, Ed Correo, the City Attorney, Eric Bell, and the interim City Manager, President, and myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will then now proceed. And the way we plan on proceeding will allow for comments from the public. You'll have two minutes to come up to the mic and give your statement if you filled out a form. Was there forums to be filled out?
No, we're just gonna call.
Okay, well, we're just gonna call people since there's no forums that have been filled out. You can come up to the mic and speak for two minutes. And then after they're done, we'll proceed with the interviews. The interviews will be done with an open statement, a two-minute open statement by each candidate. Questions then will be asked by members of the council. And then closing statement by the candidates at the end of the questions. And at the conclusion of all of the interviews, the council will get together and decide if they're going to select an individual from those that are coming. And that's the option that the council will have, either to select someone or decide that we will keep it open, or decide if they wanna go to a special election. And those are the options. Is that correct, Attorney? Eric?
Correct, Mayor. You could also have nominations from the floor, even if somebody hadn't filled in an application. You do have some latitude. But, but otherwise, with that caveat, you're right.
Thank you. So at this time, we open it up for public comments. Are there any individuals in the public that would like to come up and speak? If so. And please just state your name. Right here in the front. Oh, you can go up there.
Is it here?
Yeah, that's right.
I can go wherever you want. My name is Michelle Sanchez. I've been a longstanding member of this community for most of my life. And I would implore the council to do the right thing by the voters of this city. The council seat that was vacated was vacated because of an election. There's no need to have a special election. Just take the next highest vote getter. That's what the county, that's what the city wanted. That's what the community wanted. It doesn't matter who it is. It's the right thing to do. Give your voters what they voted for. I don't see, no one was declared incapacitated in their ability to their seat. The seat was lost and opened because of an election. We have election results. There's no need to do interviews and applicants, and then maybe do something else because you're not happy with any of the applicants. Please, again, I implore you, do the right thing and listen to what your voters and your community have to say, especially in this particular circumstance. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Linda Chapman. I am a fifty-two-year resident of the city of Rialto. Unlike Michelle, I'm going to read mine. Today, I sent out a notice to the City Clerk's office. Please allow me to go on the record to express my concerns regarding the council's deliberations for filing, fulfilling the current vacancy. I understand the council has a lot of autonomy. But as officials elected by the citizens, there must, they must demonstrate a high level of democracy and fairness when making this appointment. Filling the current vacancy should not be handled like what occurred in two thousand and twenty, when someone that didn't run for office that year had no special credentials was appointed. The vacant seat should go to the third person with the highest votes, who went out to gather the signatures, who paid their dues, who paid their commitments to ask the citizens to support them for their vote, and not be denied the right to be considered for that seat. In all fairness, the current, the current candidates that's running now, Ms. Gonzalez, Ms. Davis, Mr. Moore, Loopy Camacho, they're the ones who paid their dues. They're the ones who went out and did the work. They're the only ones that should be considered for the seat. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Linda. Any other members from the audience? Yes?
Good evening, Mayor Baca, Council. My name's Charmaine Chapman-Moorehead. I also am a fifty-two-year resident of Rialto, gone to all the public schools here, grew up here. And I just wanna share with you to make sure it's on the record, a message, a letter that I sent to the City Clerk's Office today. It reads, "In regard to the vacant council seat, in my opinion Raphael Trujillo should not be considered to fill it. Should the council choose to appoint Mr. Trujillo, they will be rewarding a failed mayoral candidate that willingly gave up his council seat. As a mayoral candidate, Mr. Trujillo received a lesser number of votes than those received by the third highest vote getter in the two thousand and twenty-four council race, Anna Gonzalez. If the council ignores the will of the voters by appointing Mr. Trujillo to the vacant seat, the elements of collusion, cronyism, bias, impartiality will be very evident. As a voter and fifty-one-year resident of our great city of Rialto, I also implore Mayor Baca and the council members to make a democratic and fair appointment that protects the will of and the rights of the voters. The council can accomplish this by appointing Anna Gonzalez or another candidate that ran for City Council in two thousand and twenty-four, not mayor. I hope Mayor Baca and the council, I hope you agree that demonstrating a high level of integrity in making this appointment is essential. Thank you."
Thank you, Charmaine. Any other individuals who'd like to get up and say a few words?
Good evening, Council. My name is Brenda Parker, a longtime resident of Rialto. Good morning, I mean, evening. Say good morning. I am asking the council to honor the next highest vote getter proposal and person for this particular council seat. Not only is the person qualified, she has shown great tenacity and great accomplishment and great dedication to this city. And I just wanna say, it needs to be understood and known that the next highest vote getter proposal is not only for this particular election, it is for future elections. It is to garner, to harvest, to secure, and to just maintain the integrity of this city. And I think that is more important than anything that anybody can do. So I'm asking you to show your integrity, to show your dedication, to show your honesty to this city, and honor, and honor the next highest vote getter. And it's besides the point that it is Anna Gonzalez, who happens to be very smart and more than qualified to sit in that seat, and has put her time in, and has put her dedication in, and has put all, everything in that she needs to, to have that seat. That's where it should go. But once again, if I may reiterate, it's not just about this election, it's about further elections. So, once we set this precedent here for the next highest vote getter, then it shows the city of Rialto, the people of Rialto, that this council has integrity, and it is honest, and it is listening to the voices of the people. Because the voices of people have vote, has voted, and that is their voice. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Brenda. Is there any other, any other members wishing to speak? Hearing none, then we will close the oral discussion. At this point, then, I will call on the City Clerk to call in our first candidate.
Okay, we're gonna have, and I'm gonna go by the order that they was submitted into the Clerk's Office on the timestamp. So the first one we have is Equa Junior, so he's coming in, Montez Junior. We're bringing him in now.
Edward, before you begin, I'm just going to explain the process. You'll have two minutes for opening statement and two minutes for a closing statement. In between there, council, members of the councils may ask you any questions. So at this time, you can begin by giving your two-minute statement.
Okay, my name is Edward Montoya. I'm a retired Army medic. After I retired from the military, I got out and I got into Department of Corrections with the State of California. I was a youth correctional counselor for about two years, and I resigned soon after that. I created a nonprofit a few years after that. And I, what I do is I give, I offer services to veterans and first responders. And what we do is offer peer support services and mental health services to veterans and first responders. I work really closely with various nonprofits in the community. I am a part of a canine care team with Working Dogs for Warriors, in which we assist in the training and the implementation of offering service dogs to various police and fire departments around the area.
Okay, thank you. At this time, then, we'll allow for members of the council to ask the questions. I'll start with asking our senior member on the council, if he'd like to ask the first question. Member Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Montoya, welcome tonight. First off, I wanna thank you for your dedication and service to our first responders and to military personnel. And thank you for your service.
Yes, sir, thank you.
My, my question is, you stated that you have a, um, a foundation. Do you currently receive money from the city of Rialto through its CDBG block grant money or the County of San Bernardino?
I do not receive any grant money from any local, state, or federal agency.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, so what is, what would be?
What would you consider your biggest highlight in terms of accomplishments for our youth, for our seniors, and for our business community here in the city of Rialto?
My biggest accomplishment with youth and, and seniors?
Yeah.
I would say I'm, I'm able to give back to their fathers, their grandfathers, their mothers, those who have served. I don't only provide services to the veterans and first responders, but I actively contribute to the, the health and well-being of their family members, spouses, children as well.
And for our business community?
Our business community, I, I'm always, I'm involved in in just a whole, whole lot of things. I can't really pinpoint.
No worries.
That's tough.
That's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Claudia?
Thank you, Mayor. How long have you lived in Rialto, and what are some of the most significant challenges that you feel are facing Rialto at the moment?
I've lived in Rialto. I bought a home in two thousand and nine here in Rialto, so fifteen years. I would say there's a couple of challenges, but one is infrastructure. I think the, the building of all of the new warehouses is, is a really tough call because they're starting to encroach on residential neighborhoods. I, I do see that. And from what I understand, we're starting to halt some of that, which is really good. But roads, streetlights, I think those are, are big things that we need to really focus on.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a set of questions I'd like to ask you, Edward.
Yes, sir.
What would be your priorities be as a council member if you were to be selected? What are some of your top priorities?
I think, I think my top priorities would be economic development, public safety, community engagement.
And what direction do you feel that the council should be going in and helping the city move forward?
Well, I, I think, I think you guys are on the right path, the way it's going now. And I, I personally would just like to contribute to, to that, to the, the growth and, and the well-being. I don't, I don't have any complaints in, in the way you guys are, or in the direction and the, the way you guys are moving forward.
And my last question would be, what is the one thing that you would most hope to accomplish during your time on the city council? In other words, what is your top priority again, and why?
Top priority, I think, would be, would be sustainable infrastructure. Continue the, the growth and the building that we are currently moving towards now. I, I think in the past fifteen years, I've seen the city grow tremendously, and I believe it's in a very good direction.
My last question would be in, in reference to teamwork. As, as a member or as a mayor, I believe that it's important to have teamwork amongst the members of the council in terms of directions that the city needs to go in, whether it's public safety, whether it's fire, police, or economic development, or where we wanna be in the future. How do you feel about teamwork and communications with members of the council or the public?
I think teamwork is, is a very, a very critical thing within a, a community like this. I have a strong set of, of skills in leadership, organizational, and advocacy skills. I have skills in crisis intervention, crisis response. And I think the best way to, to keep the team working together is, is finding a set of common goals to continue to move forward.
Thank you. Now, Edward, you'll be allowed a two-minute statement to state anything else that you want to state, that you felt that maybe we didn't ask, or you want to give your last pitch in terms of why we should select you.
Okay. Well, you guys, you guys have my resume, and I'm sure you guys have, have read my application. I, I thank you guys for all allowing me the opportunity to even come and, and pitch myself to you guys. I really appreciate that. I've been in the community, working strong beside our, our local governments, our public safety, our various schools. And I've, I've worked really hard to, to maintain my, maintain who, who I am and what I, what I want to do it on helping others within the community. And I thank you guys again for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you very much for coming before us, then.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you all.
Madam Clerk, will you call the next candidate?
The next candidate we have is Mike Story.
Good evening, Mike. I'll begin by telling you the, the process that will be following is that we'll allow for a two-minute opening statement from you. And then there'll be questions and answer by, I mean, questions by the council members. And then you'll be allowed a two-minute closing statement at the end.
Okay.
So at this time, we'll begin with our senior member, Ed Scott. And members do not have to ask a question if they don't want, but can, if they feel like it. So we'll start with Councilmember Scott.
Good evening, Mr. Story.
Good evening.
Welcome. I, I think my first question is, we all, we all know you, you were, you worked for the city for a long time as both Development Services and City Manager. How, how would you see yourself coming as a, in a role of a council member in interacting with the employees of the city in kind of a new position? And do you see any issues between working with Development Services, in other words, micromanaging, or, or the City Manager's Office with micromanaging?
Well, thank you for letting me to be, to be part of this process, to do that. And then sitting in the room with a whole lot of people that are just as anxious and qualified and wanna be part of this, I really appreciate that. You know, the one thing is, I, you know, for, for years and years, you know, sitting up there with you guys, I sat up there in a different role to be able to do it. But being part of a team of five to be able to do it, surely it's got a different responsibility to be able to do it. You need to work to consensus, you need to work together to be able to do it. We all may have our own viewpoint, we all may have different ideas or initiatives that we wanna do, but we really need to work together to be able to do that. I saw you guys do that in the past, and I'd like to come up alongside and do that too. I can, I can do that, you know? The one thing you know about me, I'm, I have a pretty even keel type of thing. I'm the same guy, I'd just be sitting in a different seat. I did that when I was Development, you know, Development Services, when I was a planner, the City Manager, and what I've done to be able to do that. So I think I can do that. With development, you know, that's my mindset sometimes, it's like, you know, to, like, Councilmember Scott says, you know, to micromanage because I think I know what's best. Well, no, I don't. I've seen what you guys have done since I've been gone for seven years, the improvements that have gone on, the things that I worked on and then came to fruition, and things that you guys continue to do. That's why I didn't even have chosen to leave this town. This is where my home is, this is where my church is, this is where my family is, this is where I wanna be. And I just felt I had the opportunity to add to that, to come back on to be able to do it. People say, why in the world would you do that? And I'm like, well, you know what? I still have stuff that I can offer. I can do that. I have a lot of the things, endeavors I do in the city. But this, that would be just one more thing that I could help with. You know, I've done stuff with the city since I've left. But also, I think it's important that, you know, I still see employees, I still talk to them, I still miss them. Some of them, just not all of them. But enough of them. And so I think that's what I, I wanna be able to do, is they know somebody who can hit the ground sitting in that seat from the day you get, that knows the stuff, that knows how the budget process goes, how things go, the responsibility of a council member in that, and to work together with you guys to be able to do stuff. And that's, you know, you guys would come in and talk to me all the time about stuff and work with stuff, and that's just a different guy, different seat with the same guy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy?
So first off, thanks for your many years of service here in the city. And now as a, as a servant over at Sunrise Church, and all the people that you help on a weekly basis. I, I, every time I see you, I think I, I thank you for that because there's a lot of need in the community. And, and I appreciate you being here and, and sharing the interest that you have to be a council member. So I have a simple question, just, I wanna know what do you believe some of your highlights and biggest accomplishments have been with youth, seniors, and our business community?
Well, when I, when I worked here and stuff, I know there's a lot of things that you wanna call accomplishments that you do with seniors, that be able to do that. I was here so long and stuff like that, you know, I saw when the senior center was up here in the north end, and then we built a new one in the south end to be able to do it. And the help from the federal government to be able to do that through block grants and be able to, to be able to do those things. And so you see things happen with the seniors and the programs that happened through that. And, you know, we've seen the development that occurred and what's going on here. We've seen with all the other departments. We've seen, you know, I've seen, since I left even Station Five, be built for the fire department. You see a brand-new police department being built to be able to do that. You see full staffing to come to issue, you know? Some of us, Mr. Scott especially, knows the fact, you know, we went through some serious struggles with the budget to be able to do that. And the problem is, you know, we're at a better spot, but it's not too hard to get back to the old spot we were in to be able to do that if we don't do things correctly. So, you know, some things I like to talk about and the things I do is like, you know, the, the, the Progress Magazine, that was an idea I had, and I worked with staff to be able to do it, and that really helps. Or the city administrator updates and stuff like, those are the types of things that, you know, they're important, that help with the community, or building bridges to other service groups and stuff. Those are the things that I was involved in, you know, it wasn't just me. But sometimes that's what you have to do, you have to put the idea out there and get the consensus from the, the, the council to, to move ahead with it. Sometimes it takes time, sometimes it doesn't happen. But you know what? The main thing is, we're all in it for the community, we're all in it for the residents, we're all in it to make Rialto a better place to live, work, and play. And that's what I've tried to do when I worked here, whether I was in a planner or whether to do that. And, but that's what I just wanted to, just leave you with, out of those types of things, with development and with seniors. With the youth, you know, I was here and worked on it when they started the teen center up there. We didn't have anything for our teens to be able to do, and, you know, we had to regroup and figure out what to do with the skate park because that was, it started off as a great idea, then we had to like reboot it and figure out a better way to do it. Same with the teen center, but we. Same with the teen center, but we've got to find some stuff for youth and the kids' programs for able to do. And so I was there to sit there when people would come up with an idea, and I said, you know, that's a really good idea, but not now, we've got to wait. Or, you know, sometimes, some of you guys know and stuff like, I would be so blunt enough to say, you know what, I appreciate your idea, but that's the dumbest thing I've ever heard in my life, you know? Don't waste your time on that anymore, put your energy into something that you're really going to come out and is going to help the community. Don't just hang on your idea because it's yours, do what's best for the community. So, that's the stuff.
Thank you. Thanks for the answer. I have no other questions.
Carla?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure how we are on time. I just have one question.
Sure.
Clearly, you've been involved in the city in several roles for several years, and thank you for that. In, in this role, what would be your top priority?
Well, keep, my, whatever idea I have, I want to do, it, it comes with a consensus and to discuss with you to be able to move forward. I can't do anything by myself, to be honest, like, you know, and I can't demand that to be able to do it. One thing I would, I would like to do with the discussion that's on, is I'd like to bring back in some format or an improved version of it, or a two-point O'boot of the Institute of Progress, where we engage the community, help them out to understand what each department does to be able to do that. And that's going to be in a different format, probably more of a video format, more, a one that's, uh, in English and in Spanish, have a class to be able to do that, things I learned from the past ones. But I think that's good to engage it. First time around, when I was here, we did, we have over five hundred people go through it, that's a good thing to start. Second, can, collectively, we have to figure out what we want to do with commissions. You know, what do you guys want to do, you know, keep them, make them all advisory, which is fine to be able to do it, fill them, consolidate them, whatever it is, but, uh, the struggle is you got, you know, vacancies because people have resigned, or people are no longer with us, you know? I mean, December twenty-seventh, we lost another commissioner on transportation, Kim, uh, Kim Chipwood passed away. And so, you know, that commission's got three now, and so it makes it difficult. So that's something just to, to talk about there. And then third, you know, it's just because it's passion, because my heart, because I did it, is find what the role is we need to do to be, to find a city manager, a permanent city manager, whatever that is, whatever advice you guys can come to, to be able to do that, and we can all collect together to find the person to be able to do it, because you need someone at the helm of the ship to be able to do it, but finding the right person to do it as, you know, is hard to do. But I think collectively, as a group, we can find who that person is, uh, to be able to do it. But those would be the three things that I would, with your, with your consensus and be able to work together as a council member there, those are the three things I'd like to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Story.
Any other questions?
No further questions.
Thank you. Oh, first of all, Mike, thank you very much for the service and the time that you have been, uh, not only as a commissioner, uh, and also a, um, city manager for the city of, uh, Rialto, and your interest to continue to be part of Rialto as well. I have a couple of questions that I'd like to ask you. One is, what do you see as the most difficult challenge facing Rialto now and in the future?
Well, um, we all have seen, I, I've, I've been here through really lean and tough times, uh, to be able to do that. And that's no excuse, that's not any reason, no, we can't point the finger at anybody to do, it just happened, whether it's economy-driven, or COVID-driven, or whatever the life is that happens there. Uh, the, the main thing we need to do is continue to make sure we have a, uh, robust and budget with a reserve in it to be able to do it for the bad times to be able to do it, but not go crazy with the budget, but still be conservative of what we do with that. The budget is, drives the force to do it. And the biggest part of that budget is personnel and staff. And how do we continue to take care of what you guys, I'll be honest, you guys have done an amazing job taking care of employees, from the time when I was carving out stuff to add, to be able to add stuff, to be able to do it, to help them out, to be able to do it, so, but continue to stimulate our workforce to be able to do that. And most of all, continue the, the path that you're on with development, uh, to, to see the things that are going, you know, to see, you know, River Ranch come to fruition, to see the, the Lennar development behind Renaissance, to see the, you know, commercial development that's occurred down along Riverside Avenue. Those are pluses, but we can't stop there, you know? How are we going to help continue to stimulate the downtown? How are we going to continue to generate revenue into our coffers to make things so we can do the things that we want to do? And also, you know, continue on the path of, you know, you guys have done a great job with parks, you know, whatever we want to do with those, to rehab ones we've got, and rehab programs to be able to do it. But those are the things that we need to keep the engine going, to, to make the, the community keeps going. And, and like I say, you all have ideas, you have all great passion to do what you're doing, you, you know, you're knowledgeable in so many things. But the main thing is, is how do we come together and be able to do that and make this what's right for the community to be able to do? So those are some of the things I see with development, with staffing, and, uh, with the budget, and just how we continue to work together, uh, as a community to be able to counsel, because they've, you know, they put, put us there, you put someone there, and the community puts you there to be able to help with those decisions and do it, and you continue to do the good job that you guys continue to do, so.
Thank you, Mike. And this question is almost similar to the one you just answered, but what direction do you feel the council should be going in, in helping the city move forward?
Well, you continue to, even in bad times, you guys did, uh, the, the right things and stuff to be able to do it, the tough things, they're, they're tough to do. You were able to, you know, weather through a horrible COVID situation and through tough financial situations to do that. And, and the council, you know, you guys continue to listen to the community and, and what they want, but the coun, the community's got to understand that they've elected you to do that and that direction, and, and sometimes even, um, you know, people come up and they may not agree with everything, but they've put you in that position and they trust you, and I trust you, you're going to make the right decisions to be able to do that. And sometimes it's going to be unpopular, sometimes, you know, the, the right decisions are sometimes not the easiest ones to make. I mean, make it over the years and stuff, whether it's with public utilities, going with a concession agreement with water and sewer and things, people get upset about those things. But the main thing is, we need to keep moving forward with, with what, what you're doing, even when it's not the most popular thing. Even when they put you, they're there to make those tough decisions and stuff, and that's what I've always admired, when I sat there to be able to do it, is that you make the tough decisions that people need to hear, not what they want to hear, but what they need to hear, whether it's regarding financial things, or development-wise, or projects, or, you know, things they want. You know, we got all kinds of requests from people that say, I want this in our community. Well, we can work towards that, but sometimes it's not the time to be able to do it and things. So that's your job to listen, your job to do, and your job to continue to make, put Rialto first, which you all do in what you do as council members and as mayor.
Okay, thank you. What is the one thing that you would hope to accomplish during your time on the city council, because you'll be, uh, this is a two-year term right now, you're replacing, uh, myself on, on the council? In other words, what is your top, uh, policy, priority, and why?
I think some of the things, I, there's some things that, uh, the council provides the direction for to the city manager and to be able to the, or the department heads to be able to do it. And this is another thing I'll be able to say and stuff, is like, I mean, you guys is, is, when I was saying manager, you have direct access, you can talk to anybody that you wanted to, talk to any department head, talk to employee and go straight to them. That should still be the case, whether I was sitting as city manager, sitting over there as a council member. You should be able to go and talk to who you need to, to be able to get the answers that you need, because the one thing I learned by sitting up there is like, many times the question that you ask, you already know the answer. And I think we need to, as staff, be able to respond, uh, to you in a professional way. If we don't know, we tell you we don't know, that we're going to find out or what we're going to do. But I think the main thing I want to do is just continue to, you know, work together for the goals, however you establish them, whatever they may be, whether it's with development, whether it's with the budget, whether it's with seniors, whether it's with youth, whether, wherever it might be, but do it all for the right reason. You know, when I left, when I retired, when I retired at my, my dinner, I said this, I read this scripture, and this still applies to everything I do today with Sunrise Life, or in the community, wherever it goes, where it says, "Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit, rather in humility. Value others above yourselves, not looking to your own interests, but to the interests of others." That's what I want to do sitting up there, is to the interests of others to be able to do it. Not me, I'm not doing it to like, I'll be honest with you, if I go up there for two years, I have no intention at this time to like do any more than serve two years and help you guys out for two years to do that. I'm not looking to get a leg up to run in two years to be able to do that. That's what I want to do, and I want to make sure that's clear too. But I think I can bring value for two years, because I can, the day you put me there, I know what's going on, I know the process, I know what to look for in the budget, I know the questions to ask, I know who to talk to to be able to do that. Hopefully, I can be part of the team with you guys.
Thank you. Uh, now you'll be allowed a, a closing statement, if you'd like to add anything else, and if not, uh...
Sure. Well, I've lived here for forty-four years in the city. I've worked in government in some capacity, uh, whether it was with the city of San Dimas, the city of Duarte, city of Fontana, Rialto, or the county, for forty-four years. I was here in Rialto for thirty-two years. And so this place is my heart, this is my home, this is where my family is. Hopefully, I brought some value when I worked here, hopefully I continue to bring some value if appointed to the city council. And if not, I'm not leaving, I'm still going to be supportive of what you guys do, and I'm going to be supportive of Rialto, because the one thing anyone knows that, that whenever I go someplace and someone talks trash about this town, they're ready for a sixty-eight year old guy to take them out. That's just not tolerable, and to be able to do that. This place is not that way, this is not who we are, because this is a good place to live, work, and play. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mike.
All right. And I'd have to get a coat and tie, because I don't own one anymore, so I'll have to borrow one from Ed or something like that, or go buy one, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next person?
The next candidate we have is Javier Gomez.
Thank you, Javier. What we'll do is we'll allow to, allow for an open statement. You have two minutes and an opening statement, then there'll be questions and answers by the council members, and then you'll be allowed a two-minute, uh, closing statement, uh, as well. So at this time, I'll allow you to make your opening statement.
Okay, my name is Javier Gomez, and I've been a resident of, uh, the city of Rialto for over twenty years. Uh, we currently, I currently, um, operate a business in the city of Colton, uh, and, um, I'm involved, very involved in that city, and unfortunately, I can't run for council there. Uh, I saw the opportunity here, so I would like to bring my thoughts and my ideas, my experience that I have in working with the community to the city of Rialto where I reside.
Thank you. At this time then, we'll call on, uh, members, Ed Scott? Thank you. Mr. Gomez, welcome. I, I see most of your experience is in Colton, and I understand you do own your business there, but I'd like to hear from you tonight as what you see as the biggest issue or problem facing the city of Rialto.
I believe the, um, the, one issue that I see is, uh, is the, we, the lack of beautification of the city. I think there's a lot of improvement that needs to be done there to make the city, uh, more beautiful, more attractive to, uh, perhaps new residents, new, new businesses. And, uh, and we, we're previously in Rialto, our office was here in Rialto, and, uh, because of the, um, um, the difficulties we saw in working in the city of Rialto, we had to relocate to a different location. But again, my, uh, my biggest, uh, concern is, again, the beautification of the city.
Could you maybe elaborate on the difficult, difficulties you had working in the city of Rialto?
We had, um, different issues. We had issues with the licensing department, we had issues with the contractors, uh, that were working, uh, on the streets, um, so we had different issues, uh, dealing with, uh, with the city.
And you don't have those issues in Colton?
We don't, yeah, fortunately, we don't.
Okay, good, good. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, next, I'll call on the next member, Andy.
Yeah, so what are your, some of, some of your biggest accomplishments here in the city of Rialto with youth, seniors, and our business community?
I'm sorry, I, I'm a little...
Some of your biggest accomplishments with, uh, our youth, our seniors, or our business community here in the city of Rialto?
What am I, I'm sorry, I'm...
Any of your...
I'm sorry, okay, I got it.
Accomplishments that you've had with our youth, working with our youth here in the city, with our seniors, or with our business community?
Thank you, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, I can't say I have any experience with, uh, interactions with the, the, those, um, members of the community.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next question by Member Carla.
Thank you, Mayor. I know you mentioned that, you know, one of your top priorities is the beautification of the city. Can you share your understanding of the, some of the most significant, uh, projects or programs that are currently underway in the city?
I cannot name any, any, uh, but it's, I'm mentioning that as a resident, and from what I see, uh, either driving around or within my own neighborhood, my own neighborhood, that, uh, I, I see that, uh, there is really no, um, nothing being, uh, conducted in that, that aspect.
Thank you.
Any other question?
No other questions, thank you.
Thank you. Javier, uh, my question would be, uh, what would be your, your priorities as a city council member for the city of Rialto? What would be your top priorities?
My top priority would be, again, the beautification of the city. Starting there with, uh, making the, the city more attractive, um, making it, uh, more, uh, appealing, uh, to the, the eye, uh, not only as a, as a resident, but, uh, for, again, a prospective buyers of homes in the area, um, or new businesses.
Okay. What, what do you believe, uh, I don't know, what direction do you feel that the council should be going in, in helping the city move forward?
I believe the, I think there should be more outreach from the, uh, council, uh, to the community. I can't say that in the twenty years I've ever met any of the council members. Uh, unlike, and I hate to bring it up, the city of Colton, where our council members, or the council members there are more, uh, active in the community, and, um, they're, and, and, and it's, it's, it's a great thing to see, and it's kind of a shame that I can't say the same about the city of Rialto.
What is the one thing that you hope to accomplish if you were to be selected, uh, to the city council?
Be more involved in the community. I'd like to be, uh, do more outreach, um, and, uh, and make the, the community feel that, uh, we're, we're approachable, we are able to, we are here for them, to the, for the, for the residents, um, not, uh, for any one interest, uh, or any group.
Thank you. At this time, Javier, you'll be allowed a, a two-minute closing statement, if you wish.
I, I don't have a statement, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next candidate we have is Joe Britt.
Thank you, Joe, for coming. I will explain the process, which you'll be allowed as a two-minute opening statement. And then there'll be questions by members of the council, and then a closing statement, if you wish. So at this time, I'll open it up for you to give your opening statement.
Thank you, Mayor Baca, and council. How are you? Things okay? Smiling faces. My name is Joe Britt. I am a thirty-five-year resident of Rialto, a proud member of the city, and I'm a fighter for the city, for people. I have been on the commission, on a, I've been a commissioner for the past, ooh, thirty-three years. Currently, I'm chairman of Park and Recs for the past twelve. I've dedicated my life to helping the citizens of Rialto, and most of my free time for helping the citizens of Rialto, one way or the other. I am a family man, married forty-five years, the same pair of legs. I have four children that were raised here in Rialto, have graduated from different schools in Rialto, and I have eight grandkids. My legacy to them is to show them that one person with a team can make a difference. One person with a good mindset can make it, make a difference. make a difference. One person with a good mindset can make it, make a difference. I am a businessperson. I own a radio station that we developed. I have a, I broadcast a TV show, I've got your racing TV that I've had since oh-four, and we are broadcasting that on two channels, uh, Amazon TV and local TV. So, when it comes down to how to squeeze the quarter and to get every maximum amount of energy out of that quarter for the good of the republic, that's me. I'm a bean counter, and I'm proud to say that. The reason why I'm running, I've ran for council three times. Um, and I've seen a lot of different faces on this diocese. Is that my two minutes?
Yes.
Okay. I'm proud to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, our next member will ask the question. That's member Ed Scott.
Welcome, Joe.
Hey, Scott, how you doing?
Hey, first off, let me thank you for your many, many years of service, uh, on the Parks and Rec Commission.
Thank you.
And we really appreciate that service. Um, I think what I'd like to hear from you tonight is, what do you think the city is doing good, and what do you think we're doing bad?
Well, let's go with the good. When I moved here, um, in eighty-nine, there was a sheep herder that was herding sheep on pepper. See how much we've grown. And, um, with the ad hoc committees that I've, that I've been on as far as putting the city forward, you can see that now. At one time, we were thinking about, um, the progression of Riverside, and that has come to fruition. So, the city has grown a heck of a lot, and I'm very proud to be a member of the community and to see that happen. Now, as far as something wrong, there's not too much I can say that's real negative about the city. We have good growth. We've increased our numbers, uh, in the community. People are happy to be here, that I've heard, in the community. Um, so as far as something negative, I can't put my finger on it, Scott. I think we're doing, we're doing good to be the size that we are, coming from a forty-nine thousand to over a hundred and, maybe a hundred and forty-nine thousand now. We're not doing too bad as a city. It, growth-wise, yes. I'd like to see us grow even more. And we could, with the right, um, people in place, uh, we could grow the city a lot bigger than it is.
Thank you. Next member, Andy Calacetis.
Hi, and thanks for your many years as a commissioner. I think all of our parks look beautiful.
Thank you.
And, uh, thank you for your many years of service and your input. And, and I'll just, uh, I'll tag on to that last, uh, uh, statement you made that, uh, you, you would like to see our city get better. So, what exactly what you do to continue the, uh, business growth, to continue, continue development, and to continue the growth that has been here in Rialto, and how your input, how your ideas would make it a better place to live, grow, and thrive?
Thank you. Over the years, I have come to understand that, um, it takes a team to go forward, and it takes a team with the right mindset to develop a city that people will come to love. And one person, mm, could push it a little bit, but it does take a team to, uh, to do so. I have a lot of great ideas, um, that I would love to see, um, put in place to see Rialto grow even more than it is, you know, to have a lot of rooftops. And we could do that, I'm not gonna say very easy, there is a way that could be done. Now, just put this on the table. Bloomington right next door, I've been talking for the past twenty years. I would love for Rialto to get Bloomington and bring him into the fold. So, then we would have a, we would be owning from the fifteen to the sixty. That's a lot of ground, and that's a lot of taxes that we can, uh, have in the city coming to our coffers. So, there's a lot of potential here.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, uh, member, Carla Perez.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Britt, um, thank you for all your service. Um, and I know you mentioned that, you know, growth is, is one of the priorities, and we have so much potential. But what is, uh, one of your top, uh, policy priorities that you would have as a council member?
Repeat that, please.
Uh, your top priority in, uh, as far as policy?
To work as a team. To work as a team, and to get things developed as a team. A top priority, that would be it, because whatever team comes, one person just cannot do it. So, whatever the team's developed that is good for the citizens of Rialto, I'm for it. Uh, that would be one of my top priorities, is getting to the mix, learn, so people can learn how I do business and my mindset, and we can work as a team to go forward for all the citizens of Rialto.
Thank you.
Joe, I have the next question. Uh, what direction do you feel that the council should be going in, in helping the city move forward?
First of all, council members, you need to, I'm not gonna say you need, but it would, it would be good for you to listen to the community. Uh, community input is very valid. And without the input from the community, you, you, you would not really know, um, what they want. And that would be, in my opinion, uh, the community input. Have more meetings, uh, with the community. Have more coffees with the community. Uh, Mayor Baca, they would love to see you out in the community, and for coffees, you know, in the mornings with the chief, like we had before. Uh, the community input is ve- is very important. So, your question, that would be, that would be something I would push for, you know? Community involvement, and to see that your council will get out there and be more active in the community. When we have functions with the, um, with Park and Recs, and we have a lot of different functions, um, Park and Recs that we developed in-house, um, it would be nice to have your participation to come out, so people can see who you are. People can see the names with their faces, not just sitting on their diocese. That would be very important.
Okay. Well, thank you. Let me, I'm just gonna answer a little bit. I think most of the members here on the council have been in a lot of the activities that, uh, are, that have been sponsored by the, uh, Parks Recreation, uh, on that note. And yes, there's always, uh, room for additional, uh, uh, participation in other activities throughout the city. Uh, but my next question would be, what is the one thing that, uh, you would most hope to accomplish during your time in the city council? And, and of course, uh, what would be your top priority and why? What do you hope to accomplish?
Well, on, on a wish list, I would love to see our city hall grow, meaning that the structure. I would love to see a grand city hall, you know? Um, I have ideas that I can put in, that I can help and show. Um, there's a lot of things I can, I can tell you, man, but I, I'm not on the council to do it, you know? I'm, 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 I'm on this side of the diocese. And I would love to, uh, be a part of all, uh, situations as far as making this a larger community and making it grow forward.
Okay. Uh, thank you. At this time, we'll allow you a, uh, two-minute closing, uh, statement, if you wish.
Well, I appreciate you, um, the council and mayor for giving me the opportunity to express some of my opinions. Um, I have a vast amount of opinions, but I haven't expressed them as much as I would like to. But what I would say is that the choice you make, um, should be able, the person you get and appoint should be able to hit the ground running. Okay? I have been, um, chairman of Park and Recs for twelve years. I know how the city functions, not as much as you do, you know? But I do, I know how it functions as far as being a chairman, and I know that being a team player, uh, is, is very important and how the contracts work within the city. So, um, I'm hoping that with my vast experience in business, uh, I'm not rich by any means, but I do, my wife and I, we have, we, we have things, we have obtained, um, certain things in the city and, and, and outside the city. I'm hoping that you can see, uh, and understand that I would be a great asset for the city of Rialto with my background, with my service to the community, and I'm hoping, and, and I'm not gonna wish, but I'm just hoping you would see what I can do and how I can help the city go forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming forth.
Thank you for having me. Thank you.
The next candidate we have is Kevin Moore.
Kevin, thank you very much for coming before the council. Uh, what we will do is that, uh, you'll have a two-minute opening statement. And then members of the council will ask you questions, and then, uh, you'll be allowed to give a two-minute, uh, closing, uh, remarks, uh, at the end of the, uh, interview. So, at this point, we'll start with your opening statement.
Good evening. I'm Kelvin Moore. I'm a twenty-five-year, twenty-five-year resident of Rialto, um, married, child, um, have, um, been on the Transportation Commission since two thousand and ten, um, and served on, still serve on West Valley Water District. I'm originally from Compton, California, via Pomona, and, uh, came to Rialto in two thousand, two thousand and one. So, um, watched a lot of changes, got involved with transportation when my wife had a car accident, and I wanted to know what's going on with light, lighting up on Live Oak. And I kinda got hooked on that. So, um, been serving ever since. I'm also a associate pastor at my church, Love Island Church, and I serve as a communities' manager as well. Um, the reason I'm here is because I wanna see Rialto go further, um, be a voice for our people that are here and reach to that they're all represented. There's a lot that's happened in the last twenty years since I've been here, and I'm really impressed with it. I love inviting people over, taking them to the movies, taking them to places that they didn't think were here, and, um, just trying to make the community better. I have a vision for, um, jobs, local jobs, for the, for the, for the people that we have here to be working and living in their community, um, with various partnerships and collaboration, as well as making sure we have not affordable housing, but housing that people can afford. Um, I think it's a big difference. And then also for our homeless population as well, um, I have a, a desire to kinda help with that as well, and as, and also for our senior housing, because people are, um, don't have, they don't have the income to maintain. And, um, I know we have a pantry, and a couple of pantries in the city, and if it wasn't for those pantries, a lot of seniors wouldn't make it. Um, so, that's me in a nutshell. Um, just wanna serve.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll call on council member Ed Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, and, and welcome.
Thank you.
Um, you currently serve as an elected on the West Valley Water Board?
Yes, sir.
And when does your term expire?
Uh, two thousand and twenty-six.
Two thousand and twenty-six. And can you explain to us, uh, why you wanna make a jump as an elected on West Valley's board to an appointed on, uh, the Rialto City Council? And then my last question would be, what do you see as the biggest issue in Rialto?
Okay. Um, the reason why I, I would choose council is because it's, um, uh, an opportunity to touch more people and, um, assist in collaboration with, with the things I just mentioned before, with some of the systems that we have here. Um, broader basis with the school districts and things like that, inter, creating a collaboration, we can work hands-on with homelessness and with, um, food, 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 people that are hungry and, and, um, the elderly. Also, too, with some of the infrastructure, um, as far as the, uh, aesthetics of places and finding out how those things work, how come we like, what's the schedule for pothole cleaning or, uh, repairs, and as far as aesthetics for plantings and things such as that, but also for public safety as well, um, making sure that we have, we have a great collaboration with our police department. Uh, my vision is that we have a community where there's unity. Um, so, officers know our community, know our people that are in there, and that our folks, our teenagers and young kids, have no fear. They had, they see them and work with them and collaborate with them, and parents collaborate with them. So, I think I have an opportunity to kinda bring that forge ahead and, um, get people more civically engaged as well.
Thank you. Uh, next member, uh, council member Andy Calacetis.
Thank you. So, what, what do you feel is, is one of your biggest accomplishments in, you said you've lived here thirty-some years?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, with our youth, our seniors, and in our business community, what do you feel is one of your biggest accomplishments in those three areas?
I think with, um, youth, um, through our, through our, we got a youth center, and also we have youth, um, a youth center, but also we have what you would call, uh, Brotherhood Crusade, not necessarily in Rialto, but in other places. But in Rialto specifically, it's with the elderly and making sure they have food and, um, clo- food and necessities there through our pantry, but also connecting with other bodies if we need to, to see if they need, have any other issues. Um, we currently, um, partner with the, with the, with the men's home, and we actually have ten, ten men there right now that were, that are off the streets. Um, two have been in our program for two years, and, um, they're moving on. They're actually licensed ministers now and getting ready to go out. So, those type of things.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask, uh, council member Carla Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Um, what, uh, do you see, or, or what do you feel are the most significant challenges facing Rialto right now?
For me, as I look at the city, um, I think there's opportunity for maintenance. I think there's also opportunity for better communication. Um, I know we used to have what you call the area command meetings, and I think those ceased about a couple of years ago, but that was really beneficial because each park and neighborhood could represent their neighborhood and talk about some things. That's, you can't, because we can't always make it down here, but you're actually feeling heard at that point because you're interacting with your officers and things like that. I think that's one thing that's missing. I think also, um, the Institute of Progress was a great informational tool for all residents, which I think they should all have that when they move here, just to see how the city works. Because sometimes we work on assumptions, and we all know that's not, that's not gonna work for us. So, it brings a, a wall of frustration on this side and on that side. Um, and another thing is, um, not transparency per se, but sometimes you just wanna know where your balances are. So, how much money are we spending as a city? What do we have left? You know, where are we at, where are we going? Um, those are my biggest concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have the next question. So, what would be your top priority as a council member if you were to be selected?
My top priority would get to talk to my other councilmen and see what's been going on, historic projects they're working on, and what things that they see, and see if we can talk about things that I've seen, that I have desires with, or I've seen constituents have a problem with, and see how we can come up with a solution, a program, or at least a couple, three points that we can work on together, um, in a unified matter.
Okay. Uh, what, uh, direction do you feel that the council should be going in, in order to move the city forward?
I would say affordable housing, or housing people can afford. Um, also, youth programs as well, and als, and what's the other one I was gonna say? Also for, uh, special needs children, uh, parks are their areas for them to go and be safe as well.
Okay. What would, uh, one thing you, you would hope to accomplish during your time in the council?
First is eliminate, or at least reduce, food insecurity with the seniors. I think that, and then also reducing our, um, homeless count and finding, um, mental health services for them, and have something set where they can go. mental health services for them, have something set where they can go, and if someone needs permanent housing or long-term housing, we'd have a connection to get them there, that no one's in a, in a wash somewhere, that we know where they are and we're dealing with it.
Now we'll allow you to have a closing statement, anything else you want to add?
No, I thank you for your time, I know this is a, a, a long painstaking effort, but I thank you for the time and the consideration, even that you, that you read and called me in, so I appreciate that. Carla, nice to meet you formally, um, and congratulations to you that won, and, um, we're just hoping that, um, we can get Rialto on point, staying where it is and getting it better, um, we have so much opportunity here, we have a lot of opportunity, and we're right next to San Bernardino, and, um, it shows us we have, we're doing great, but we can do better, but we also need to look out for them as well, and then make sure that they're, that they're, we can assist them in some ways, so that their runoff doesn't come here, you know what I'm talking about? So, anyway, just ready to go to, go to work and serve with you in any way that I can.
Thank you very much, Captain, for this.
All right, thank you.
All we have, Ms. Vicki Davis.
Vicki, thank you very much for coming before the council, at this point, uh, I'll explain to you the process that we'll be going in with. Uh, you'll be allowed a two-minute, uh, statement at the very beginning, uh, and then there'll be questions by members of the council, and then a closing statement if you wish, so, uh, opening statement?
Thank you, thank you all for having me today, I really appreciate the opportunity to address all of you. Um, one thing that I have learned in my career as a mental health professional is that the most valuable senses of motivation for people to achieve what they set out to accomplish is those that are derived from an intrinsic and passionate place, and that is where my motivation comes from, for wanting to participate as a council member. I was raised here in Rialto, I went to Rialto High School, I raised my children here, and I have made contributions to this community my entire life, um, even as a child. I participated in Kiwanis Club, I founded our city's Juneteenth event, I also founded our city's Entrepreneur Expo. For the past three years, I have sat on the board as the co-chairperson for our men's health awareness event, um, and then in addition to that, I've, I've organized several parks cleanups and other initiatives in and around the city of Rialto, because this is my home, and I am dedicated to see, uh, our future continue to be bright and to grow. I also want to make mention of a very important point here to the council, and that is the need for diversity in our city council, in that we might represent the entirety of our city, that is not just ethnic diversity, but generational, that is background, that is career experience, so on and so forth, and I believe that I bring a unique and valuable perspective to our, to the city council, in that my background in mental health allows me to take a prevention and early intervention standpoint, um, when it comes to developing policies that will serve our city and our community well, um, into the future and addressing the needs in advance, so that we as a, as a council can move in a direction that is aimed at understanding potential challenges for our city and addressing those early on. So thank you again for the opportunity to, to present myself here, um, and, and I'm open to answer any questions that you do have for me.
Good, at this time, Vicki, we'll start with, uh, council member Ed Scott asking the first question.
Welcome, Ms. Davis.
Thank you.
And, and thank you for what you do, um, my question is, do you currently operate, uh, any foundations?
Yes, I do, I sit on the Board of Directors for Stronger Together Now, um, as the Chief Financial Officer. I also am on the Board of Directors for Tomorrow's World, um, which is an organization that provides mental health housing for, for adults, um, and, and with Stronger Together Now, we provide academic tutoring and youth mentorship opportunities. Um, in addition to that, I am a clinical supervisor at Victor Community Support, where we provide individual, family, couples counseling, grief counseling, and other types of, um, clinical resources to children and families in San Bernardino County.
Okay, and, and do those, any of those foundations receive funding from the city of Rialto? Either CDBG or in other ways, or from the county of San Bernardino?
Yes, sir, um, with Stronger Together Now, we do receive CDBG, we received our first, um, round of CDBG funding in this past fiscal year, when we presented, um, a proposal and were granted that funding through the city.
And are you aware that if you were chosen to be appointed to the council, that that would present a conflict of interest for you?
Um, I do believe that there are other organizations who have members, um, who have been council members or who have held, uh, elected offices, whose organizations, organizations do receive CDBG funding, and in those instances, those council people would excuse themselves from votes or any other, um, decision-making, um, positions when it comes to the dissemination or granting of that funding, and so I would be willing to also, um, operate in that traditional manner.
Okay, thank you, and my last question is, what do you see as the biggest issue, um, in the city of Rialto that you would face as a council member?
I, I believe that the biggest issue, um, in the city right now is the rise in our unhoused population and how that poses a threat to public safety. I think that, um, it's very important to understand that there are co-occurring challenges that are happening for many in our unhoused population, and with my background in mental health, and also my history of collaborating effectively with Rialto PD, I believe that we can, um, coordinate efforts that would, that would support, um, the, 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 that would support improvement in that area.
Thank you.
Uh, next question is by, um, council member Andy Consetis.
Thank you for being here, good to see you, what would be your top priority for growth and economic development in the city of Rialto?
So I believe that one thing that, um, I've heard over and over, over the course of, um, my campaign for a city council was a desire for residents to have more food options in the city, um, and so working with, um, working with different grocery stores and such of that nature to explore, like, demographic, um, challenges that may have prevented them from moving into Rialto before, um, and supporting them to continue to, um, seek, see Rialto as a place where they can grow and have those businesses come in and, and be able to offer more variety to our residents, especially when it comes to fresh food and produce.
No further questions.
Thank you, uh, council member Carla Perez.
Thank you, um, I'd like to thank you for, you know, everything you do for the community, and I know that you've shared, um, some of, uh, your, uh, volunteer work and, and professional, um, but can you share what, um, your skills and experience professionally, um, as well as, you know, through the other, um, organizations, have, uh, prepared you to effectively serve as a city council? I know that you've, you know, been out in the community, but on the other, uh, side of it, how do you feel it has prepared you, uh, to serve on city council?
Yes, ma'am, so, um, in the professional roles that I hold, um, in the different organizations that you heard me mention, I have had the opportunity to work directly with the county of San Bernardino and various cities across the inland empire, um, so I have an extensive background in managing contracts, um, in seeking, um, different funding sources, and really in understanding, um, the paperwork that goes along with moving forward agendas, not just the participation and activity that I do in the community, but also making sure that we have our documents in order so that we do things, um, according to the expectations of the different regulatory codes of the cities and the county.
Thank you.
Vicki, uh, what, uh, direction do you feel that the council should be going in and helping the city move forward?
I believe that the council should be seeking to meet people where they're at, and we do a good job at doing that, because I see a lot of, um, our council people do participate in the initiatives that are hosted by our Parks and Rec, um, and different other, like, community and cultural events that happen around our city, um, but I do think that when we are looking to address, like, our unhoused population and things like that, we really should be looking for opportunities to bring the council to the people, um, so that we can really see the lived experience of some of those individuals who are facing challenges in our city and approach it with compassionate solutions.
What would be your top priority as a council member?
Um, I believe that, um, that kind of echoes Mr. Scott's question, which would be to address, um, the rise in the unhoused populat- population, and also safety, uh, as it pertains to our citizens, and how that is affecting, um, the safety of our community.
What is the one thing that you hope to accomplish besides the housing as a city council member?
Um, I hope to accomplish, uh, uh, bringing more unity and openness and conversation to the council, um, so that we can work effectively as a team, um, because I would like to see the council be in partnership with one another and be collaborating with one another, um, more, and beyond, um, beyond the necessity, but in efforts to really be, um, a unit that moves for the good of the city and the people of the city.
What do you feel are the, the biggest challenges facing the city of Rialto now? And how do you think we should address those as a council member?
I think that one of the biggest challenges facing the city of Rialto is, um, home ownership, um, and how we are going to support the changes in, uh, with upcoming, like, layoffs and, and jobs, um, for our residents, and what that means for them to be able to seek one of the most basic rights, which is to be able to own a home and to be able to, um, build equity for their families, and I think one way that we can do that is by exploring additional opportunities for, um, things that are already happening in surrounding cities, particularly community land grants, that would, that would be, um, a beneficial venture to, to explore, to assist our community members in to be able to own their own homes.
In reference to economic development, what do you think, uh, that we should be looking at as a council member in terms of economic development, uh, for the city of Rialto?
Um, I think one of the areas of focus that has been a continued conversation is the development of our downtown area. We should be looking at how we can attract new, uh, businesses to our downtown area, so that we can have more traffic there, and we can have more diversity available for our, our residents in their shopping, so that they don't have to go outside of Rialto to find the different types of goods and products and services and activities that they need and that they would, would want to really feel like their lives are being enriched.
Okay, thank you, at this time, Vicki, you'll be allowed a two-minute, uh, closing statement if you wish.
Um, I just would like to thank all of you for allowing me the opportunity today, I would like to thank the community for being present, um, to, and showing their support in this process, and I would also like to say that, um, my commitment to Rialto is not, is not just checking off a goal, and it is not just an opportunity to seek an, uh, um, an office, but my commitment to Rialto is because this is where my family is, this is where my life is, this is where my children are, and those types of motivations are going to, um, make me the best applicant for this position, because I will be seeking Rialto residents first.
Thank you very much, Vicki.
Thank you very much.
Next candidate we have is, uh, Ivan Ramirez.
Okay, Ivan, I'll explain the, the process that we're using, we'll allow for a, uh, two-minute opening statement, and then there'll be questions by members of the council, and then you'll be allowed, if you wish, a closing statement. So at this time, I'd like to start off with, uh, if you wish to make an opening statement?
Hello, good evening, uh, members of the council, my name's Ivan Ramirez, uh, I guess I'll just tell you a little bit about myself and my opening statement. So I've been back in Rialto for about three years now, uh, I grew up in Rialto, my family moved here, um, in the nineties, nineteen ninety-five, nineteen ninety-eight, um, I went to school here in Rialto, um, went to Dunn Elementary School, Dahlahan Elementary School, Gisera Middle School, Eisenhower High School, uh, graduated from Carter High School, I was actually one of, I was part of the first graduating class of Carter High School. My family lived here up until, uh, we moved, uh, shortly before I started college, uh, and we were in San Bernardino, and then I started my adult life, uh, and I bounced around from actually state to state and then city to city, until I ended up back in, uh, here in California, uh, where I started my adult life, uh, in Redlands, uh, where I lived, uh, for a few years, until I moved here back in Rialto. Uh, my professional background has been primarily in public service, uh, I've been an employee of the county of San Bernardino for a few years now, over ten years, uh, not consecutively, uh, I did have a, a break in my tenure with the county, where I worked at, uh, San Bernardino County Transportation Authority for about two years. Uh, my background is in finance, so I'm a finance analyst, uh, currently, with, uh, San Bernardino County, uh, at the County Administrative Office. Essentially, I have a portfolio of county departments where my primary duty is to, first and foremost, uh, help them, uh, prepare their budget, uh, during the county's, uh, annual budget cycle, uh, and then just, uh, resolve any administrative challenges that they may have, help them with their capital improvement plans, uh, help find areas of improvement, review their board agenda items, uh, and, that's, that's essentially it.
Okay.
Sorry, that timer threw me off, I wasn't sure if I was public comment two minutes.
Thank you, Ivan, uh, at this time, I'll call on, uh, council member Ed Scott.
Welcome, Mr. Ramirez, um, based on your resume, we should be recruiting you for our finance department.
I did apply.
And we certainly need some good people, um, but, but welcome, I, I guess my, uh, first question for you, both questions, would be, um, what do, what do you see as the good things in Rialto that we as a council, we as a city have done good, and what do you see that is may, maybe a negative that we, uh, should have done it a little bit differently?
I think, as far as good things, I think a lot of us, our cir- our city services, so, you know, they're really top notch. I'm actually a huge fan of the Rialto Police Department, you know, growing up as a kid, um, you know, I saw a lot of the scandals from the police department, uh, but I think that they've, they've come a long way, um, I've actually had a lot of positive interactions, you know, unfortunately, you know, I, my mother sometimes suffers from, uh, mental problems, uh, you know, uh, and it's just a challenge that, you know, my family has to go through, um, and there's been times where, you know, I've had to call, uh, Rialto Police Department, you're gonna help us with that, uh, you know, it's something that I don't mind talking about publicly, you know, it's just, it's just a reality, you know, I love my mother, uh, but, you know, my first interaction, you know, being back here in Rialto with, uh, with the police department, uh, you know, was when I've had to call them, you know, to help me with my mother, and, and I was scared, you know, this was during, you know, the time where, you know, there, there was a lot of, uh, negative backlash towards the police department, so I wasn't, I wasn't sure, you know, what, are they gonna, are they gonna come and shoot my mother? You know, I ju- I just need help getting her to the hospital, uh, but the, you know, the officers that arrived, they were extremely professional, they put me at ease right away, and they were just incredibly professional, uh, with my mother, and it's something that I'm incredibly grateful to them for, um, I really wish I could have gotten their names, because they just, you know, that night it was very challenging, and they just, they just made the experience, like, really just comfortable for me, and they were able to help me, uh, take my mother, uh, you know, to get her the treatment, um, that she needed. As far as, you know, negative things, um, you know, uh, I think a lot of times, maybe that, I feel like the council needs to do a little bit more outreach, uh, to kinda help explain to the public, you know, why some of the decisions, uh, that they take are being made, especially when it comes, uh, to, like, development, to the warehouses, you know, there's, a lot of times those aren't very popular with the public, uh, but a lot of times the council's hands are kinda tied in those decisions, uh, a lot of those decisions are based on, you know, some of our zoning laws, and a lot of times, for example, like in Redlands, you know, there's backlash over warehouses, because they get approved, but a lot of times the, the consequences of that is, you know, of voting against those projects is lawsuits from the but a lot of times the, the consequences of that is, you know, of voting against those projects is lawsuits from the developers that ultimately, you know, the cities are gonna lose because of the zoning laws. Uh, so I just, I wish there was a little bit more outreach uh, when it came to those kind of uh, items. And then just one of the things, you know, I've, I've, I wish we were more proactive about filling some of those uh, commission positions. It's been three years since I've been back in Rialto and uh, you know, I've up, since I came back, you know, I wanted to get involved with my, with the community. And I applied for some of those commission positions and I haven't heard back. So, uh, you know, that's a great opportunity for citizens to get involved and get to, you know, see how the city works, get to learn how the city works. So I I hope, you know, with this new council, you know, that where, that there's more pro- proaction in getting those commission seats filled.
Good comments. Thank you. Uh, next member, uh, council member Andy Cottasidis.
Mr. Ramirez, I will make it easy for you, since you're a finance guy. So how would you uh, increase revenue without uh, increasing taxes?
How to increase revenue? Wow. Uh, well, development, you know, it's a, it plays a key role in in increasing revenue. If we can grow the city, you know, approve projects, retail projects, warehouse projects, uh, where they, they make sense, that's one way of increasing revenue, you know. There is a limit to how much we can tax the people, but if we have friendly policies towards development, we can, you know, grow ourselves out of uh, any financial problems and help bring that uh, commerce here. Uh, and by doing so, you know, you have new, new businesses, new warehouses, that's additional tax revenue that you'll bring to the city. I think, you know, one thing that I would like to see too for the city is, you know, we have real, uh, one of the lowest sales tax uh, in here in the city. And not saying we should raise it, but it's something that maybe we should like advertise more, especially when it comes time to, you know, the holiday shoppings. A lot of times you can, people can save a quite a bit of money just by coming over here and buying certain things because our sales tax is a lot lower and by advertising that, you know, maybe like a marketing campaign, uh, you could potentially bring more people in here, you know, to do their shopping.
Run a campaign, shop at Renaissance and save some money.
Shop at Renaissance, yeah.
Good. Thank you. No further questions. Thank you. At this time, I'll call on council member Carla Perez.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Ramirez. Um, what is one thing you would most hope to accomplish during your time as council if you were appointed? What's your top priority?
Top priority? Uh, well, top priority was just, really just fostering a good relationship with the public. That would be one of my first priorities. Um, and also just working with the council uh, to help fill those commission, commissions positions, that's been a prior, that would be a priority of mine. I I really can't stress enough like how important I think those roles are. Uh, just giving the people the opportunity to get involved within their community. One of the other things I would like to kind of just get an idea of is, you know, where where are we at? Where like are capital improvement projects? You know, are we, are we making sure things are getting replaced timely? Uh, particularly like with the water infrastructure. Uh, a lot of times, you know, delaying improvements uh, on this type of equipment just creates bigger problems down the line because it becomes more expensive uh, to replace. So those would be some of the things I would be looking at, you know, where where we're at as far as our, our capital improvement.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I have the next question. Uh, what direction do you feel that the council should be going in and helping the city move forward?
Well, definitely, you know, fostering uh, good relationships with the public. Like I said uh, earlier, you know, a lot of times with the decisions that, you know, the council takes, sometimes they're not very popular. But I think just being proactive uh, about involving the community and really just giving the, the community an opportunity to kind of learn about the process can help the community understand, you know, why the council takes the decisions that they do, particularly when it comes to like development. So just being proactive uh, about reaching out to the community and just, you know, I don't want, I'd hate to say the word educating them because, you know, the community is actually very smart when it comes to these things. But a lot of times they're not just fully aware of like all the different challenges and intricacies that when it comes to these type of issues. Uh, and just giving them an opportunity to kind of become more familiar with the process uh, and understand it. Helps build better trust, you know, between the council and and the public.
Okay. If uh, what is the one thing that you would hope to accomplish during your time in city council? If you were to be selected?
Definitely building just good rapport uh, with uh, my colleagues, you know, if I were to get a chance to, an opportunity to call you guys my colleagues. Uh, I think, you know, having a good council that that gets along, uh, you know, help, really is a good positive thing because it helps keep things moving. It's sad, you know, to see uh, cities, you know, surrounding cities where, you know, where there's challenges within the council. Uh, and also, you know, appointing uh, or hiring for some of the positions that have been vacant for quite a while. You know, we, we've had challenges with our city managers, you know, retaining them. So I would like to be proactive about that, you know, hiring the best uh, for the city. You know, this is an excellent city and and you know, they deserve the best. Um, and just being proactive uh, about filling those uh, again, those commission roles. I think that would be, go a long way in helping, you know, extending trust with the community. It gives members of the public an opportunity to get involved. And it's just one way to help build that trust, to help build that bridge.
What kind of economic development do you feel that the city should be involved in?
So we have to, you know, leverage our our strengths. So, you know, one of the sa- uh, one of the, one of the challenges, you know, is, you know, what, what type of jobs, you know, makes sense with the, you know, our type of demographics, you know, are the, the education, this uh, the workforce that we have, you know, the skills that they have. You know, we're not gonna attract big Silicon Valley types of of companies because that's just, it just doesn't fit the reality, right? So uh, when it comes to like warehouse development, you know, I I do think that makes sense. It's just, you know, help, helping find a balance, you know, where we're, where we're gonna put these. You know, we don't wanna put them too close to neighborhoods. And if we can find ways to kind of mitigate some of those uh, challenges that come with that type of development, either through uh, benefit agreements, community benefit agreements, or just seeing what the developer can do, you know, to help kind of mitigate some of those challenges. I think those types of developments do make sense. And again, just looking at, just looking at our demographics, you know, what type of, you know, what type of development makes sense and then just being realistic about it.
You know, small businesses make up the majority of our, our revenue and they present an opportunity for growth and development and sales tax. What would you do to increase the level of small businesses for the city of Rialto?
So a lot of times when it, when, when it, in my experience, you know, from listening to city council meetings and listening to the public, uh, I I'm, and again, this is, I I listen to not just Rialto, there's the surrounding cities that I have an interest in too. So I don't know if this is a particular issue with Rialto, but a lot of times people just have challenges navigating through like the permitting process and uh, you know, the licensing process. Uh, so having like a, maybe like a workshop where we uh, kind of help simplify that process or where we can give people the opportunity to come in and kind of get like the, the full scoop on how to go about getting those licenses and permits. I think that would go a long way in helping uh, drive that economic activity with small businesses. A lot of times that is like a, a business's first challenge is just navigating through all, through all the bureaucracy and it can be a little intimidating. So anything we can do to help publicize uh, how the process works and make things easier for those potential business owners to, you know, come down here to city hall to get those permits, get those licenses, I think would go a long way and help getting those small businesses started.
Okay. Uh, now, uh, Ivan, you'll be allowed to make a closing statement if you wish.
Well, I just wanted to just thank you guys for the opportunity just to come here and get to share a little bit about my background, uh, both, you know, here in the city of Rialto, uh, just as a citizen, uh, and to share my professional background. I hope I get an opportunity to, you know, to serve and and share uh, my skills with the ci- with the city and with the public. Uh, but I've had a chance to talk to a lot of people that are back there right now, so there are a lot of good candidates. So whatever decision you guys make, I, you know, I I think it, it would be a positive one. There's a lot of good people, a lot of smart people out there.
Okay, good. Thank you very much for coming before us, Ivan.
Thank you.
Where's my other, oh, he left.
He'll be back. He just uh, okay, we can hold back. Elvis, we'll uh, wait a few minutes until uh, one of other members uh, comes back.
So this is Rosio, uh, uh, number seven candidate. Yeah, it's not here. No. This is Rosio.
Is not here?
Elvis isn't here, so number nine, Rosio.
This is Rosio.
Number eight.
Number eight.
Who's, who's, oh, okay. So Elvis is not here then? Okay, I'm sorry. I was going by the order. Well, thank you very much, uh, Rosio, for being patient and I'll explain the process that we'll be going through. Uh, we'll allow for a open statement, a two-minute open statement at the beginning. And then there'll be uh, questions by member of the council and then a two-minute closing statement if you wish. So at this time, we'll begin with the opening statement.
My name is Rosio Martinez. I, I live here in R- Rialto. I've been here for about ten fif- ten to eleven years. I work for San Bernardino Medical Center. I also am part of the SEIU UHW Union. I am a labor movement. I, I wanna do, I am running for, I wanna be a council because I want to um, make a difference in my community, uh, bring um, jobs, uh, small businesses, um, better education for us, our kids and our children and do something for the um, for the homeless, right? Also, and um, I also am part of uh, LULAC. I also been helping with LULAC, with uh, the Free Health Cl- Clinic, organizing that with the LULAC of Ri- uh, Riverside. I would love to open my branch here in Rialto as well. Um, I am also, um, I do a lot of things with the um, labor movement. I'm also part of the Lab- uh, Illinois Empire Labor Council Committee. Uh, so I really want to be able to bring in my knowledge within the city of Rialto and be part of it. I wanna see it grow and thrive, bring work to our, 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 uh, our people here in Rialto. And um, yes, that's about it.
Okay, thank you, Rosio. At this time, we'll call on our first council member, Ed Scott, to ask a question.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Um, in your own words, can you explain what you believe are the positive points of Rialto, good things we've done? And what do you see as negatives in Rialto that we need to work on or make better?
What, me as be, uh, you know, living here in Rialto, I see a lot of, um, I seen a lot, especially the Renaissance Center, that is amazing. If we can expand it to like a shop, like a mall kind of thing, it would be more awesome. I, when I moved here, uh, there was nothing there, right? It was about, it was empty space. I seen how it's thriving in that um, shopping center. I see it's always packed. There can be more stuff like that out here. We need more safety on the streets, especially in certain areas of Rialto. You have, you know, a lot of homelessness and people are afraid to be walking out in the streets in certain time of the, of the night and and the evening. I think that's, it's more and more of the cleanup in some certain parts of Rialto. Um, but um, everything else is awesome. I love my city. So and and I like I was saying, and I, I have heard Mr. Vaca saying that we should do more shopping centers. And yes, we do. We need to be more, more restaurants, more stuff like that, like a Victoria Gardens. I'm imagining Rialto like Victoria Gardens when I see the Renaissance. That would be awesome, to be more jobs into Rialto.
Okay, and any, anything negative?
Negative. It's just um, the cleaning part, more of the, uh, 'cause I'm part of the north side of Rialto. So we're out cleaning, more cleaning is to the other side of the two-ten. Like more like in the, we're, uh, food for dinner area, stuff like that, more of the cleaning area. That's what I noticed it more.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, uh, Andy Cottasidis.
You're many years here in the city of Rialto. What are your, some of, what are some of your accomplishments with either youth, seniors, or our business community?
My accomplishment will be uh, having more activity for the seniors. I would like to have more of the uh, rent for seniors, like the fifty-two and seniors hu- hu- um, house of living for them. Uh, that's what I would like to see more in like in Rialto, especially for people with old, uh, higher ages, seniors. Give them the opportunity to live within the city of Rialto and provide them like apartments for seniors five, fifty-five and plus or something like that.
Thank you. No further questions.
Uh, next, I'll call on council member Carla Perez.
Thank you, Mary. Um, how have your skills, well, first of all, um,
Thank you.
How have your skills and experiences uh, prepared you for serving uh, on city council, city council?
I am, I don't know, I'm an honest person, so I'm going at this my first time as a city council. I have done other stuff like the communities with the feeding the homeless and also uh, getting, organizing the health, free health clinics for the community of Riverside. And that's it. You know, I'm coming in and I wanna learn and I'm gonna, if I'm gonna learn, I'm gonna learn from the best that are here, right? So that's my challenge and my abilities is what I, what am I bringing to the table?
Okay, thank you. Uh, what would be your top priority as a city council member?
Top priority would be uh, affordable housing for everybody. Cause I am one of those people that is having a hard time, you know, with especially with the cu- uh, how, everything's expensive. And I'm pretty sure they're out there, people that are working three to two jobs just to make ends meet. And somewhere we can be able to control that and be able for them to afford somewhere to live. Because you're looking at apartments, I'm calling, I am calling um, certain areas since for my sister, she's looking for somewhere to live. And it's two thousand five hundred, three thousand. It's like, okay, so how can us as a city come together and make something that our members within the city can afford something? You know, can, we can probably, I have like an idea, but it's like probably creating apartments that are owned by the city, right? And then we as a city be able to provide them that rent. We put our rent limit. As a city, we could probably do something like that. Instead of going out there and renting apartments somewhere else, the city provides you apartments and we control how much we can increase the rent control. And I, I mean, those are some of my ideas, right? So I would like something like that. Something that we can be able to say like, okay, you know what, we can come to live in Rialto. They do have affordable housing out there. Uh, they, I want them to say like, well, they have senior apartments and you can be able to afford them. You know, it's not just, it's affordable housing and yeah, you have section, section, what is eight? And people like to sometimes lie on their income to be able to get in there. We need to find something for our community, something similar like that.
Okay, thank you. What do you see are the most significant challenges facing uh, Rialto now and in the future?
Uh, the challenges I see, and it's everywhere, not only here, it's, uh, homeless issues, right? It's something that's never gonna have, and, um, it's something that we're never gonna be able to take care of, but at least we can take care of it within our city. Um, that's my priority. That will be our thing, homeless, taking care of our people. That's what I, how I see it. Um, and that's just a challenge now and into the future, um, because it's, it's, it's a topic that, it's a never-ending topic. There's people out there that do wanna be helped, and there's people out there that don't wanna be helped. So it's something that is really, really challenging, and it's something that, as a city, we should try to take care of what we have within our city.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll allow you to, um, give your closing, uh, statement if you wish.
Well, I wanna say thank you, thank you very much for having me here today. Um, I am just thrilled to have the opportunity to be here with you guys. Um, and I'm just gonna say this, if you guys could give me the opportunities to show you that I can be reliable, and I'll do my hundred percent and twenty more to that. I'll do my best to do what I can do for the city of Rialto. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
And happy New Years, everybody. Thank you.
Next, uh, candidate we have is Rafael, Rafael Trahill.
Good evening.
Good evening. Well, federal, I'm gonna mention the, uh, process that we're using. We're gonna allow for a two-minute opening statement, and then we'll allow for questions from members of the council, and then you'll be allowed, uh, two minutes, uh, your closing statement. So at this time, we'll open it up for you to give your opening remarks.
Hello, I'm Rafael Trahill. I, you know, I'm a former, uh, council member. Um, I'm applying for the vacant position on the city council. I'm passionate about public service. I, um, I love my city, and I wanna continuously serve as a voice for the residents of Rialto and be able to be an advocate for some of the, uh, issues that, uh, the city is, um, addressing, not only here locally, but, um, even as issues are being addressed at the, uh, state and federal level.
Okay, thank you. Uh, at this time, I'll call on council member Ed Scott.
Good evening, Mr. Trahill. There's been some criticism from some members of this community that you vacated your seat to run for mayor and, and didn't do very well running for mayor. Um, can you address, um, that criticism and the fact that you've, uh, decided to apply for this vacant seat, and why?
Definitely. I, you know, I, you know, part of the, even when I, uh, decided to run for mayor, it was to be a bigger voice for the city. It was always about representing Rialto residents and being able to, uh, be able to, um, be able to find a, um, a space to be able to be a better advocate for them. Uh, you know, I, you know, the reason I'm applying for the vacancy is to continue that work that I've started, uh, being on the long tenure that I've been on the city council, and, uh, be able to continue that and be able to continue being a voice and advocate for the city. Um, it, it's not that I gave up my seat, um, to, uh, to have a different type of voice. Um, I was give, I was, um, giving up my seat at a chance to have, um, a, a bigger voice for the city. And so that's how I would describe it.
Okay, and my final question is, what do you see that the city could be doing better at that's maybe a negative towards the council and the, the, the city as a whole?
You know, um, you know, since I've been on the council, we've done a lot more work to be more transparent. Even the subcommittees were transformed, um, to be more, uh, transparent, and even, uh, placed on the Legisdar to let people know that we're having the subcommittee meetings. Uh, when I first started, um, the CDBG committee, um, you know, we, uh, used to negotiate, um, outside of the public on some of the funds that were being given out or being distributed. Um, during my tenure, we actually had the open discussion in front of everyone to be able to kinda decide, um, how to divide up the funds. There's another, uh, uh, subcommittee I worked on, um, and it was on, um, uh, you know, we, we had, uh, kinda discussions on the budget committee and finance committee. Uh, those could've been more open. Um, we assign ourselves a lot of ad hoc committees and subcommittees that sometimes aren't really kind of discussions that are being held in front of the audience or in front of the, the public. And I think, um, I look forward to maybe opening up the city more to have a, a more community-oriented discussion.
Next member, uh, Andy Caddasidis.
Yes. Good to see you, Mr. Trahill.
Good evening.
Good evening. So can you highlight some of your accomplishments as a council member in the last, the last eight years with regards to youth, seniors, and our business community? So just give us some of the highlights, what, some of the accomplishments that you feel were the highlight of your tenure as a council member?
I think bringing in, uh, private funding to the city at thirty-three million dollars was a big highlight. Um, it's money that the city residents don't have to pay. Um, you know, making sure that, um, you know, businesses, bigger businesses, uh, pay their fair share. Um, and, um, for small businesses, I felt like I have a long record of, uh, being able to kind of address some of the issues, um, here at, at the, at City Hall and as well as with the Community Development Department. Uh, we had, um, small businesses that, um, had six-month delays in opening, or, uh, another one that just had to have difficulties with their permits. And I felt like being able to address those, um, case by case was a, an accomplishment, um, and, and a service to my community. Uh, but the other stuff, uh, that you mentioned with seniors was def- and the youth was definitely the parks. I was here during the expansion of the parks, um, and I was on the park commission, but when I got on, onto the council, I continued, uh, working on those parks and be able to, um, serve on the, uh, Joe Sampson Park expansion, um, and get really involved there. Um, you know, we've added a lot more kind of, uh, recreational opportunities for our kids and our youth. Um, for, uh, seniors, I think the pandemic was, was big, you know, being able to provide assistance for, um, low-income residents, uh, when they needed it. Um, as part of the CDBG subcommittee, um, as well as working with all of you, uh, we were able to bring out millions of dollars to residents to be able to get them through the pandemic.
Great, I have no, uh, further questions, and thanks for your many years of service here to the city of Rialto.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next member, Carla Perez.
Thank you. Um, welcome. Good seeing you, and thank you for, you know, your many years of service. Um, is, you know, you discussed your accomplishments. Um, is there anything that, you know, if you were appointed, you would like to do differently, or anything that specifically you'd like to accomplish?
Well, definitely, I, I, one of the things that I'm, I'm applying for, um, is, is to ask if I can continue some of the, uh, the subcommittees that I previously been on. Um, I've developed relationships there that would allow me to continue with the tenure and be able to have a more of a, a voice in some of our joint, um, uh, project authorities, the JPAs, um, including Omni-Trans. Uh, I mentioned, uh, Prism. I was pre- previously on Prism on the Finance Committee. Um, and I, you know, was even involved with the Liga Cities and, and trying to get a bigger voice there for, uh, some of the issues that, uh, affect our city. So I, I would like to continue kind of adding tenure and being able to, uh, you know, take on leadership, um, in those areas to give us more, better, more representation for, for the residents.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I have the next question. Uh, Mr. Trahill, what would be your top priority as a council member if you were to be reinstated?
Um, it, it's definitely reconnecting, um, with the, the, uh, the residents in a way where I'm, um, you know, definitely more accessible, so I could be able to kind of address some of the issues. You know, this, these past six months, I've learned so much about issues such as, you know, sidewalks or roads. Um, a lot of people, um, in our city want us to address traffic issues. Um, you know, they're looking for speed bumps. Um, you know, there's, you know, um, different kind of ways to kind of slow a lot of the traffic. And, um, I'm learning that's, that's becoming a bigger and bigger issue in our community. Uh, during the holidays, uh, as you know, we, we've had a lot of tragedies on our streets, um, and our residents are really, um, advocating for us to do a little bit more on that. So I definitely wanna do more on traffic safety and creating, um, ways that, to make our streets safer for not just pedestrians, but actual drivers.
What direction do you feel that the council should be going in, in helping the city move forward?
I think it's, you know, it's a multiple approach. I think, you know, there's a general plan, making sure that, uh, we continue to have public input on the direction of city there. Um, uh, I see the general plan as a number-
I'm asking you.
Yes.
I'm not asking what the general plan is. I'm asking you, what direction?
Definitely having, again, an open discussion on the general plan. Um, you know, that's how we are able to get, um, people's input on how we want the city to become in the future. So definitely getting more input on the general plan, um, getting more, um, you know, going out there and being able to, again, address the needs of the residents. So, um, our, our city needs to be, uh, for, move forward by communicating more, uh, to our residents and trying to meet them where they are, uh, whether it's, like, mention some of the, the traffic issues that I mentioned to you, or if it has to do with our local economy, let them have, you know, we need to have some more discussions on that. Um, you know, um, definitely want more communication.
What do you see as the most significant challenge facing Rialto now and in the future?
I think the, the, the biggest challenge, um, is, uh, you know, I, there's a lot of value to being a bedroom community. Um, but we can't go back to that. Um, you know, I, I think when residents are asking for their services, they're asking for, um, the city to be able to provide, you know, the basic, um, items that they're, they're looking for. Um, you know, the city has to have that revenue. Um, so I believe, you know, we need to focus on economic development, um, even in a diversified way, uh, to be able to bring different types of kind of businesses here, um, so that we can have kind of the opportunity, uh, to provide for our residents.
You know, a question was asked by council member Ed Scott, that you ran for the mayor's position, and you had an opportunity to run for reelection and still been a voice. Why is it that you gave up your seat and decided to run for a mayor's seat when you could've still been that same voice in moving the city forward and working with members of the council?
I think I was, I was looking for a greater voice. You know, I, as mayor, you're not, you're, uh, creating kind of the agenda, you're, um, you're on several other, uh, subcommittees, um, such as economic development, um, and, uh, you know, setting the, the city council agenda. It gives you different opportunities. Um, I was, I was trying to kind of take that role to be able to kind of have a bigger voice for my community. It's not that I was wanting to have a different voice, it's that I wanted a greater role in the city.
Let me ask you this, this question as well. Do you believe in teamwork as a member of the council, with people on the council, working with them, and communicating with all members of the council?
Uh, you can't communicate with all members of the council. You can't count to three. But I do wanna work with everyone on different issues. I'm not a one-issue person. Um, and I do wanna, uh, you know, uh, talk about several issues affecting our community and working with all of you on different issues. Um, uh, like I mentioned to you, you know, I've, you know, I've been on a number of, of, uh, boards where I'm, I'm developing relationships. Um, I'm developing relationships here, um, and it's really for the benefit of the Rialto residents.
Right. Um, and I also meant in, in public, not just, I, I understand that teamwork is very important in working with the council members, and the Brown Act, you know, prohibits us to talk to more than two. But when we go to public events, I think we all have a responsibility to work together and communicate. Have you done that with members of this council?
I've done it with the city. Uh, you know, I-
I'm talking about this council.
Definitely.
Us, right here, with the exception of one here.
I've definitely, I've communicated, uh, with our, our staff assistant, uh, who then gives out information regarding events. Um, you know, I've, you know, attended different events, uh, with our assistant, kind of, uh, communicating with all of you. Um, I work with the assistant in a way to kind of get information out.
Okay, I, I've been to a lot of these events, and, uh, I've never heard you communicate at all with me in any of these points or committees, uh, in the public. And I understand that in terms of issues that the Brown Act prohibits, but, you know, we all have a responsibility to get along with one another and work together as a team, uh, not just when we're here, but out in the public. And, uh, you didn't, you know, I've sat on here for two years, and you've not communicated with me, and I tried to reach out to you at the beginning, and it never happened. But, uh, with that then, I'll allow you to-
We've definitely communicated here on the council.
I'll allow you, I'll allow you to give your closing statement.
Okay. Well, you know, again, I think I, uh, coming back to the city council would allow me to continue the work that I've s- uh, started, um, you know, being able to serve not just here on the council, but even, uh, the external committees. Um, you know, I believe we need to have a lot more, um, you know, work towards being more transparent and being even more accessible to the community. Um, you know, I have a lot of accomplishments because I, I, I have, uh, perfect attendance, and not just here at the city council, but also in the external committees. Um, you know, I, those are things that I bring to the table. I, you know, I, I take my work at the city very seriously, and I take the work that being done at the JPAs very seriously as well, and I like another opportunity to return as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor and Council, our number eleven is out ill, and I think I, I've given you a memo for that. So we're gonna move to number twelve, which would be, uh, Jessica. That's- Well, good evening.
Good evening, all.
Jessica, thank you very much, uh, for coming before us. Uh, I'll explain the, the process that we're using. We're allowing a two-minute opening statement, and then we'll allow questions from members of the councils if they wish to ask, and then we'll allow you to have a closing statement at, at the end, a two-minute one. So at this point, we'll allow you to give your opening statement.
Okay, well, first and foremost, uh, esteemed council, thank you so much for having me. My name is Jessica Justine Haro. I am a city, uh, resident of Rialto, uh, city. And, uh, just to start, I, I wanna say, and this is a good thing, I saw the opening for this opportunity via, um, socials, and I was intrigued because it was a half-term. Um, and so anytime that I've seen, I've always followed lo- local government, and anytime I've seen it, it seemed daunting because, oh, that's such a commitment, such a long term. Um, but when I saw this specific opening, I said, okay, that's more approachable. Um, and I was really interested in this opportunity and experience. Um, Rialto has been in my blood and veins since my existence, and, um, part of the reason why I was very committed to this opening was because, uh, I wanna say the last five years, I have been trying to find a place to establish my roots. I've looked far and wide, um, throughout the entire country, very heavily within California, and it just so happened to be that home was Rialto. And so I was great, I was blessed enough to be able to buy my first property here. And with that, in living here, I've been able to see many things that, that I like within the city, but also that, um, interest me within council that I can improve upon. And so, like I said, when I saw the position, I just really wanted to apply and, um, have the experience. Um, let me see. Lastly, a little bit of background. I do have, um, government experience, although it's not as vast as my peers. I, I am well aware. Um, I do think that my, my perspective and my lens is useful. Um, I'm always trying to get my friends and my siblings and my, my family and my cousins to pay attention within municipalities, within local government. to pay attention within municipalities, within local government. Is that the time? Oh, I'm so sorry, okay. Well, okay, good for me to know.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jessica. Now I'll call on council member Ed Scott to ask the first question.
Ms. Haro, welcome.
Thank you so much.
You do have some extensive experience-
Yes.
-with other cities.
Yes.
I am especially interested in one item that you have here.
Okay.
So if for some reason you don't succeed tonight-
Okay.
-I can assure you that the city of Rialto is looking for somebody proficient in the ERP system.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. I am very interested in that, yes.
So I would encourage you highly, if you don't succeed tonight, to look at our job listings and consider coming to Rialto.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. I have actually looked very in-depth, and I haven't seen a ton-
There might be some people that grab you on the way out the door because-
All righty, all righty, no problem, yes.
Our, our biggest downfall in this city is ERP.
All right, I'm, I'm here ready for it.
Wouldn't you agree with that?
Yes.
So my, my question tonight, you've, you've lived here for a few years.
Yes, two.
You've got obviously some very good city, uh, government background.
Yes.
What, what are the positives that you see about Rialto? The things that you think are good and that we're doing good?
Mm-hmm.
And then what do you think are the negatives, the things that we need to do better?
I, number one, I love Rialto's economic development and push for it. I think especially in comparison to other municipalities near us, Rialto is just on a trajectory that's a lot faster than you see in other communities. So the economic development was definitely like, I think, number one reason why I wanted to buy a, a home here, because I knew, hey, you know, people might say this and that about Rialto, but it's established, it's been here for over a hundred years, and I do have experience with the city of Eastville, I saw their economic boom, and I really felt and believe that that is similar and something that can happen here. As far as a downfall, or something that can be improved upon, as you stated, it might sound generic, but it's what I genuinely feel, the parks, I really think that they, they can be improved as far as, although they're accessible, at the hours that they're accessible, they're not always safe, and so that would be just, I don't know how you improve upon it, but it would be kind of great to look into that. I am an avid parkgoer, so is my family, so are my friends, and so I like to go at sunrise, and it's not always safe. And so I guess that's one way I would look at improvement, but definitely economic development as a strength. I love the way the city of Rialto is very transparent with its community, in my opinion. And I also really enjoy that, like, the slogan, "Bridge to Progress." It's not pretending to be something it's not, that's what the state is, and so there's potential, and I just think it's a strength, because sometimes cities want to say that they're already there when they're not, and, yeah, I just, I pay attention to the agendas and everything that's going to all the meetings and whatnot, and so I'm very interested in it. And actually, before I, I'm sorry, moved to Rialto, I paid attention.
Good.
Thank you for your question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're obviously very energetic and dynamic, and you have a, a big smile, which is always a plus. Have you, can you highlight some of the accomplishments that you've had in your experience with either youth, seniors, or in the business community?
Yeah, all three or just one?
All of them.
Okay.
And I'm gonna add some more.
All right, all right. Well, with youth specifically, one of my favorite things was, I was avid coordinator for a few years, and so, oh my gosh, those kids like took my heart. I started with seventh graders, and now they are turning 23. And so I didn't continue in that line of work because I just thought, I don't have this much heart to give every single class, it's really, really hard. And so I did bow out respectfully, excuse me, but aside from just my job, I was there trying to figure out how to get school supplies, clothes, mediating kind of some family things, translating for Spanish households. It just, it kind of encumbered my life, but it never felt as an obligation. And to this day, like I said, I still have connections to many of those families, and they always say I'm family to them, I feel the same way. So that's one example. With the senior community, it's funny, I was talking to Mr. Story about this, because I volunteer at the sunrise, living in Rancho, and essentially it started because I always kind of had to be independent and by myself growing up, and I thought, well, it's summer, it's hot, they have AC. So I went in and I said, how, how old do you have to be to volunteer? I believe, oh my gosh, I had to be like in fifth or sixth grade, and they said, well, I think you have to be 13 or 15. I was like, well, can you make an exception? I can help in the kitchen, I can read books, I can do all these things, and they made an exception, and I was able to continue with that. I loved it. The only downfall was my friends, I'd come a few weeks later, they'd be gone, and so that was really hard for me to deal with. But I did find that, hey, this is kind of a community that's overlooked, in my opinion, and so that really did continue even into like my college years. I would just like volunteer in the weekends and go clean refrigerators, go, just talk to people, go to their apartments, and I didn't get to the third.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Thanks for the question.
Next, I'll have member Carla Perez.
Okay.
Thank you, welcome.
This time is really going by fast. Thank you so much.
I know, I see you have, you know, a, a lot of experience in government, and how do you feel that your experience and skills have prepared you to, you know, serve as city council if you were appointed?
Thank you for that question. Number one is being able to balance and juggle everything. I don't, I mean, we, we all do this, but I feel like I have the skill set to be able to be organized, commit my time, somehow, I don't know how many, how I do it, how we all do it, but that's definitely a strength of mine. If I say I'm gonna do something, I do it. If I commit to something, I'm committed. I never do anything not wholeheartedly, and I think that that's not something you can instill, it just is you, and so that's one of my big strengths. I also do have experience within fiduciary responsibilities and fiscal responsibilities, and I do think that that is important. And the last thing that I kind of want to highlight, just because I don't know if my time's ending, is that I do think sometimes a lot of people like to come into these spaces and say, this is my goal, this is what I want to do, this is what I want to change. That's not the reality of municipalities. Within municipalities, you have to go with what was already set, you know, the strategic goals, just the long-term range planning, you can't, I mean, you can interject if it is allotted, but I think it's really important to go into these spaces and move the project forward and not kind of stop it because of, I don't know, maybe personal interest or whatnot. So I think having that understanding is a very large strength, and I don't necessarily have personal motives besides the fact that I'm a resident of Rialto and I'd like to do this type of work. So yeah, that's my skill set. I can't believe I didn't run at a time.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Jessica, I have the next question.
Okay.
It's, what would be your top priority as a member of the city council? You, you mentioned parks and safety, but beyond that, what would be your top priority if we were to look at the city of Rialto and wanting to move it forward? What would be your interests in terms of working in moving the city of Rialto forward?
I mean, truthfully, economic development. I feel like everything is there in that realm. So however I can participate in, whether it's budgetary meetings, whether it's stakeholder meetings, to just get like feedback, I do think that that's kind of the livelihood of the city. Apart from that, I really do think, I mean, I hope streets and sidewalks are not part of parks, but like infrastructure is really important as well. The city is beautiful and it does have history, but there are some areas where infrastructure should be focused on. So I feel like those would be the top two, entering this position, and then just remaining transparent within the role. That would also be a, like, something to highlight that I feel it would be of importance to me.
When you mentioned economic development-
Yes.
Uh, what role do you feel that the small businesses play in the city of Rialto, whether it's growth, development, bringing in new businesses? How would you address that in, in reference to small businesses?
It's so important. I love small businesses, I support all of our small businesses, and just becau, like, for example, I'll use like CoffeNuts, Coffee Bean, and Hood Coffee, like, although they, obviously Coffee Bean is a chain, it's still relevant and important to our community, as are those other two. And so I think you have to have a good realm and like spectrum of that, from small business to large, to keep your city afloat, but also to keep things moving forward. Being an advocate for a small business, man, I guess just kind of boots-on-the-ground kind of situations. I do have experience with getting funding for different small businesses, so I don't know if I'm allowed to help with that, but if I could, I would. And so I do think that, you know, any, I don't know, I was gonna say, any programs. I know that the city has CDBG funding, I have a lot of experience with that, but so how else would I bring small businesses to the city? I guess going to those different conferences, reaching out to people. I mean, a, a good example you can really talk about is on social media, people have their small businesses, whether it's a little cart or something of that nature, they don't have a housed place, so kind of trying to figure out how to get them that housed place, or is it gonna be like a food truck? So I think tailoring to each person, I don't know if that's possible or allowed, but that would be something.
Okay. Jessica, what would be the one thing that you hope to accomplish during your time as a city council seat? Because this is a two-year seat-
Yes.
...right now.
What a great question. Continuity, truthfully, continuity. My aim is not to come in and ruffle things up. I have a belief in what, how the city is progressing, and so just making sure we see that through. Again, with the half-term, I do think that it's important to kind of come in with that perspective and that lens. It would be great if me being welcomed into, into this role brought different demographics into the life of municipalities. The way I'm always losing my breath in trying to talk to people about local government, I'm not gonna stop, but I feel like that would probably be a really great impact without thinking that that was my priority, and kind of coming to my mind right now, I did think about it before, but I feel like that would be really great, just advocating that, look, I did it, you can do it too, and even if it's not council, an internship or something, just getting youth involved. I'm always doing that with everybody that I know and sending different opportunities, and I'm the annoying person, but I think it's really important to have all of those lenses and perspectives and not just a youth group here or something like that.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll allow you to give a two-minute closing statement if you wish.
Okay, thank you so much. Well, thank you all for having me here. I know that I wasn't one of the people, as my peers, who had ran before, but I still appreciate this opportunity. Although I do check the city website all the time, please continue posting on the socials, because that's how I share with my siblings, cousins, and friends. And as far as why I should be considered for this position, I really do think my lens is fresh for what is trying to get accomplished. I'm trying to find my words to say this, but I kind of always get the, you'll figure it out, kid, or you haven't seen anything tough. I've seen a lot of horrific things, I've experienced a lot of things, and it still hasn't made me jaded, and so I think that that experience is my strength and will equip me for this role.
Thank you very much, Jessica.
Thank you so much for this opportunity, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Seven twenty-four. Seven twenty-four. Yeah.
Joshua, we're going to wait till the other council member come in, so, okay. So this is number thirteen, Joshua Augustus, so, the candidate.
We're following the procedure. Well, we're waiting, I'll let you know just the procedure that we're following, Jessica. We'll have a two-minute opening statement, and then after that, we'll allow questions from members of the council, and then Joshua, you will be allowed two minutes for our closing statement.
Okay, thank you.
So how are you doing today?
I'm, I'm doing good. I woke up today and it was raining and windy and all kinds of stuff that I wasn't expecting, but it's all good. I just started back work, uh, two days, I'm a teacher, so we just started back, got back, so everything's how it's supposed to be, I guess.
The Lord has been good.
Yeah, always.
I think the power didn't get cut off here, right?
I hope not, I haven't been home all day.
Well, we have generators, so.
Yeah, because I came straight here.
We were gonna test them.
Yeah.
They did.
Where do you live in the city?
Uh, uh, I call it New Rialto, because it's the, the, the new community that they built up there, the Lenars.
I think the power might have went off today.
Yeah, see, I, I didn't, I guess it's good I didn't get to go home.
Better check your steaks.
Huh?
You better check your steaks when you get home.
I hope not.
Or the milk.
I hope not. And it happens, you, I, I was living in San Bernito a while ago, and right by the college, oh yeah, it went off for a long time. At least in Rialto, the power comes back on, I'll say that.
Yeah. Well, the wind's supposed to continue until, they say Thursday-
Yeah.
-at six PM, so God willing, it will stop, and we feel sorry for many of the people that are being affected by it now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, they canceled all after-school things for my daughters' first school, too.
Okay. Now we'll begin with your opening statement.
Hi, everyone, uh, thank you guys for having me here, I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Joshua Augustus. A little bit about myself, I'll start with the most important thing is I'm a dad, I'm married, I have two daughters, a six-year-old and a ten-month-old, that keep me, keep me real busy. I work at Carter High School here in Rialto as the associate student body director, so I have the opportunity to work with presidents, vice presidents, historians, treasurers, and so on, valedictorians, salutatorians, I was able to have them in my class, give them letter recommendations to pretty much get them into college, so I like to do things like that. On the weekends, I go into the juvenile halls and the adult prisons to just tell them that they have different choices out there and that they can form relationships with God, and I try my best to kind of meet them where they are, not tell them what they should be doing, but how they can get to wherever their next level may be, because we're all at different places in our lives. Also running nonprofit, I've been awarded multiple grants, been awarded a lot, most of my awards still come from teaching, because I'm extremely passionate about that. I love helping the youth, I love seeing the youth grow. I've had opportunities to see kids that were quiet end up being able to talk and just, just do so much, so many things. Also, with our Rialto Unify, I am part of our civil and civic engagement piece. So we're gonna be taking students to Sacramento to learn more about government, so my goal is to get a lot of my students into the government so we can continue to make this world a better place, and that's a, that's pretty much what, what my focus and my goals are. I, I kind of do see myself as a servant leader, and I, I do want to, you know, lead in a way that people feel comfortable, that they don't, so, so let me break it down. A lot of times, people don't want to go and do things because they feel as though people are going at each other. Me, I have no ego, as long as people are being successful and getting what they need to get done, I really want to be able to do, be part of that.
Okay, thank you, Joshua. Uh, next I'll call on council member Ed Scott. Good evening and, and welcome, and, and thank you for your service to our, our young community.
Thank you, good evening.
How long have you lived in Rialto?
So I lived in Rialto, so we moved out here in nineteen ninety-nine, so I started in, uh, my ninth grade year at Rialto High. So my main address in Rialto, I would say, since nineteen ninety-nine, but I had the opportunity, once I went to college, to go to San Jose Humboldt-
Um, how long have you lived in Rialto?
So I lived in Rialto, so we moved out here in nineteen ninety-nine, so I started in uh my ninth grade year at Rialto High. So my main address uh in Rialto, I would say since nineteen ninety-nine, but I had the opportunity once I went to college to go to San Jose, Humboldt, San Diego. So that's my opportunity to move around. And also went to South Carolina to uh as part of my uh, my college.
But basically you've been here a long time.
Yeah, before the two-ten, so I said a little bit.
My question for you is, um, what do you see as the positive things about Rialto that the city has done, that the councils, previous councils have done that are positive for the city? And do you see anything that's negative that you think maybe ought to be changed?
Uh, one thing I do like about Rialto is the people here do have a lot of pride in being from Rialto. I love that about it. As far as the things that are going well, I see that there are new development, like I'm talking about uh with my house. There'd have been no opportunity for me to move back to Rialto because there was never any places that were pretty much open. Every time I looked for houses, it just didn't work. So I know that the new developments, that helped out a lot. Our streets are getting a lot better, especially around Rialto High. Uh, like I really appreciate that stuff. Things that we can work on, I would say, because I went on the tour with my civic engagement piece, which we're gonna go to Sacramento. It was, it was kind of sectional, I would say that. I would want more of Rialto to all look, newer, all look, that is being maintained and things like that. Because we, that's something that we really seen. And then our parks and wrecks, oh, that, that's huge. 'Cause before I went to uh college, we only had a few parks. And then when I came back, there was a lot more parks. There was parades at parks, there was Fourth of July, uh Black History Month, all kinds of things at the park. So I think those things are things that we really have been growing in, and I would like to see that kind of continue and get even bigger.
Thank you. Uh, next question by Andy Katusettis.
What do you think has been one of your biggest accomplishments and how would that translate into you being an elected official and a council member? How would you use that to uh share with our community?
I would say my biggest accomplishment, uh, compliment, our be- my biggest accomplishment would be what I'm complimented most about is being married for the last seven years, 'cause that takes a lot, takes a lot of work. And I feel as though being married, I feel as though being married has put me in a place to elevate myself. It ma- it, it, it made me to want to go and have a great job. It wanted, it made me to want to be a mentor. It made me to want to be someone that my daughters look up to. So just being married in general just made me want to be someone special that my daughters are proud of, that they can look up to. And, and through that, I was able to be awarded by the Lakers. Uh, you can look me up Lakers Educator of the Month, you'll see Joshua Augustus. Uh, that's one of my biggest accomplishments, being able to reach back out to my former students and take them to the Laker games. That was some of my biggest accomplishments. Being able to have students that I used to work with text me on my birthday 'cause some, my family members forget my birthday. So just being able to just know that I am making an impact would be my greatest uh accomplishments, I would say. Oh, wait, and my master's and bachelor's degree, that was pretty tough, too. So don't forget that. My master's and bachelor's was pretty tough, so that's a huge accomplishment.
Thank you, and thank you for all the work you do at Carter High School.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you. The next question by council member Carla Perez.
Thank you. Uh, welcome. Uh, and um, you know, thank you for everything you do for our youth. Uh, that's a huge responsibility and, and a huge accomplishment. Um, and with your experience um and your skills, how do you feel that what you've, you know, been doing in the community and in your role in professionally um has prepared you to serve effectively as a council member?
I think one of my biggest uh, my, my biggest experiences was I was part of the California Teachers Association. I was a area director. So been, in doing that, I was able to hold formal meetings. And I was also able to make decisions and learn to communicate with a large group of people throughout the high desert. I really think that helped me out. And also being a delegate for the National Education Association, to be able to actually write measures, vote on different things, and then see them implemented throughout the uh years. I think that helped me a lot to really be comfortable. And also just being a teacher in ASB or Associated Student Body, that right there is, is, is a lot of the, lot of the stuff that we do here. Uh, as far as the ASB, we're able to hold our meetings, we have our new business, we have a lot of procedures that I know that we use here. And not only that, I'm the teacher of that group, so I know how to work well with people. I know how to adjust what I need to do, to adjust. And I, and I just love seeing, you know, plans come together, people being excited about it. So I think my energy and just all of those things kind of encompass, I think that would really help me and make me grateful to sit right there.
Thank you.
Augustus, uh, what would be your top priority uh as a member of the city council?
I would say my top priority would be just to make sure that I'm making a positive impact. That's the biggest thing. Because in jobs like this, it's not gonna be just one thing that people are gonna say, oh, you did a great job, if you're not doing multiple things. And I have so much experience doing multiple things that my top priority is always gonna be fulfilling the will of the people, understanding, making sure that I'm going out, making sure since I didn't run the campaign, that they aren't, they do know who I am and they know that they can reach out to me and they understand where I stand on a lot of things. My biggest priority is getting them to know who I am and know that I am there for them. And I'm here to just make sure that this city is better than when I started.
Uh, what direction do you feel the council should be going in and helping the city move forward?
Me? I would say me is the best uh answer, 'cause I think if I get on the council, I know for a fact that I'm gonna just work, work really hard. I'm gonna work extremely hard, I'm gonna show a lot of energy, and I know that getting on that seat is, is, is not a small task. So for, for me, that's just the biggest thing. That's the biggest thing.
In moving the city forward?
Yeah, 'cause I'm gonna do every, in any everything I can. Just like I said, I'm a teacher, and since I've been teaching.
But do you have any examples of what you'd like to see the city move forward?
Oh, like what, what, what I, oh, yeah, tons of things. Oh, we can definitely always improve our roads. There's different places, different parks that don't have just different coverings that we can go ahead and put, put up for our uh kids. Because my daughter goes to certain parks to make sure that we can go at any time. It gets extremely hot out here. I think just making sure our youth is just taken care of is the, the biggest thing possible. I think just advertising our, all of our cultural events, 'cause that's a big thing I do at our, my school. I just want everyone to understand that co- our Rialto culture is different than everybody else. But it's, it's great the way that we fuse together, that we're a melting pot of different cultures, different races and things like that. So I think that's, that's gonna be huge to be moving forward. I think more housing is always great because then you bring in more businesses. So for me, for example, once, now that I got a house, I know I can establish a business. I know I can be here for a while. And I know I want it to be better for my children. Uh, the economic development, we have uh down by the ten freeway, there's a lot of, you know, air pollution. I think just find a way to find more greener, greener things to do. That'd be huge for us, being able to plant more trees. That'd be huge for us. Our, I work with the Lido Creek Cleanup. I think going up there as often as we possibly can, that's gonna be great. I think just the, there's a lot of things that I would like to do, and I think all those things will help our city.
Okay, thank you. What would be uh, you hope to accomplish uh as a member of the city council? It's a two-year term that you'll be here, but what do you hope to accomplish in the two years that you're here?
There's a lot of things that I would like to accomplish.
But what would be your, your top priority that you would really like to focus on to accomplish? And try to convince the members here of the council to go along with?
I would say my, my biggest thing would be in the school system, 'cause that's my, my specialty. My, my biggest thing would just being able to just kind of build through our schools, build through our youth, and then build our businesses. That'd be the biggest thing. I work a lot with the business owners here, and I would just like to just have more opportunities for them to know how to start businesses, the people that haven't had businesses, and just bring in as much as we can to this, this city. Let me back this up. Because, how do I say it? There's just so much that we can do in the end, and, and it's, and it's hard for me to just always limit to one 'cause I kind of talked about my priorities before, and it's the same list as far as the infrastructure and things like that. I do want as much housing as possible, but a lot, when I was uh going out, 'cause I was gonna campaign, a lot of things, a lot of what I was hearing was the aesthetics of the city. So I would like to improve the settings as we driving around that we, it looks immaculate. My top priority would be for us to be the best city in this area, better than Fontana, better than San Bernardino, Bloomington, and Colton. In the end, that's what I, my, my priorities would be, in every way that we possibly can.
Thank you. Um, at this time, we'll allow you to, you uh have a closing statement?
Yeah, yes, thank you. First off, I wanna say thank you for the questions. It's, they're really eye-opening. I do ha- I do have a lot of things that I would like to accomplish. I really appreciate everyone for coming out, taking the time to listen, giving me opportunity. I really appreciate that. In closing, I just wanna let everyone know that if I am chosen, I will work extremely hard. You will be able to tell right away that I'm here for a reason. We will be able to tell that I'm gonna make differences in any, each and every person's life. I will start with us as a group to make sure that we are working together, doing the things possible to serve the people. I will make sure to go around to the people to let them know that I will be there for them. And I will do each and everything that I possibly can, from volunteering to getting out to different public places, to making sure that they're heard, going to committee meetings, going each and every place that I can go to make sure my presence is felt in the city that I grew up in, the city that I love, the city that I wanna see elevated to the highest of heights. I will do whatever it takes to get to, to get us where we want to be able to go.
Thank you, and thank you very much for coming.
All right, thank you. I appreciate you guys. And thank you, everybody. And I'll see you guys at one point, 'cause we all work together.
Next interview we have is Lamisha George.
Welcome, Lamisha.
Thank you.
I'll explain the, the process. What we'll do, Lamisha, is I have, uh, allow you to have a two-minute opening statement. And then there'll be questions by members of the council, and then a closing two-minute statement at the end of the questioning. So at this point, Lamisha, we'll allow you to have an opening statement.
Good evening. My name is Lamisha George. I've been a resident of Rialto over thirty years. Um, I'm the best candidate for the position. I'm the last, but not least, but best candidate for the position. Um.
Got it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no, you can say whatever you want. You have two minutes. Okay. At this time then, we'll allow for uh questions. Uh, first uh member, it's council member Ed Scott.
Good evening, Ms. George.
Good evening.
And welcome.
Thank you.
Um, I see that you're a graduate of Eisenhower.
Excuse me?
I said, I see that you're a graduate of Eisenhower.
Yes, sir.
We have a few graduates of Eisenhower tonight, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, that's good.
Tells me the people are staying in our community.
Yes, sir.
Um, my question to you is, you've lived here a long time, so I would like you to tell us what you believe the city council and the city has done well, that we've done good at, and what have we done bad at? What could we change and do better at?
Um, I think uh we, we done, um, the city has done well with being diverse and with the city of Rialto personnel. Um, I feel that we need to, um, we kind of have like a homeless problem. It's kind of like starting to um spill over from other cities. And I feel that we need to have like some type of permanent housing program for people that's homeless.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll have Andy Katusettis.
So in uh your many years, uh, what do you feel are some of your biggest accomplishments with youth, seniors, and the business community?
My biggest accomplishment is I used to be a correction officer um for San Bernardino County Probation Department. And um I run into some of the youth every now and then, and they tell me I did a really, really good job with them. They feel like they, um, I helped them be re- rehabilitated. And um, working with the scene, with, with working, well, my profession is, I'm a certified nursing assistant at um, for the Veterans Hospital, and I serve as a veteran. And um, I kind of.
Okay, any other questions?
Great, thank you.
Uh, next we'll call on Carla Perez.
Thank you. Hi, welcome. Um, so with your experience in, in corrections and also working with veterans um and healthcare, um, how do you feel that your skills and experiences um have prepared you to serve as a city council member?
Well, I have, I work with a diverse population. I've worked in, in various capacities as a nursing assistant. I've worked at the women's prison, so I've worked with inmate patients, I've worked with juveniles. I've done work with um, in residential treatment centers. I've worked at uh psychiatric hospitals, um, health clinics, acute, sub, subacute hospitals. And um, I feel like I was an asset to the patients. You know, I, I'm a, I'm a real loving, real compassionate um person, and I serviced them well. You know, we work with the veteran population, and I work with the veteran pop, current, currently working with the veteran population at Loma Linda Hospital, and um, I'm a patient advocate. Um, we advocate for the patients with the nursing personnel, with the doctor personnel. So I, I feel like I'm a good person, the best candidate for the position.
Similar to what I do. Thank you.
Lamisha, I have the next question. Uh, what would be your top priority as a council member if you were to be uh selected?
I think my pri- top priority would be to ensure that I'm servicing the people, that I know what the city needs and service the people, service their needs.
What do you feel that the city of Rialto's needs are now?
Well, I feel that we uh, we can use, we can use um a community resource center. Um, we have needs with the homeless population. We need to uh service them. Um, we can service them by um mental health facilities, AA, uh, facilities for the mental he- mental health, mentally challenged people in Rialto.
Okay, uh. What uh, let's see, what do you believe, uh, what direction do you feel that the council should be going in and helping the city move forward? I'm asking you that question.
Yes, sir.
Any idea?
No, sir.
Okay, uh. If you were to be selected, what do you hope to accomplish during your time on the city council?
I kind of got a blank there.
Pardon?
I kind of got a blank there. I'm sorry.
You want me to repeat it?
No, sir.
Okay, but you could repeat it again. I'm just asking a question, so, okay, uh. Now I'll allow you to have a two-minute closing statement.
My name is Lamisha George. Um, I'm a Rialto resident, been a Rialto resident over thirty-something years. Uh, I'm a public servant. Part of my job at my church, I'm really involved with the church. Part of my role at the church, I, I clean the church on Saturdays. Um, I volunteer to clean the church on Saturdays. I'm also one of the door greeters at the church. Um, I also do cooking for like the different ministries at the church. Um, um.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Okay, well, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for having me. Have a nice day, everybody.
You too.
Thank you.
Last interview is Anna Gonzalez.
Is this the last guy?
Yes. That has put in an application.
Thank you, Anna. I'll explain the, the process. Uh, what we'll do is allow a two-minute for opening statements. And then we'll have uh questions from members of the council, and then you'll be allowed a two-minute closing uh statement at the end. Uh, so at this time, we'll start with an opening statement.
All right, thank you. Well, good evening, uh, mayor and council. Again, my name is Anna Gonzalez. Uh, I am a mother, lifelong resident of the city of Rialto and a passionate advocate for our community. For nearly three decades, I have had the privilege of calling Rialto my home. I am a proud product of Rialto Unified School District. My academic journey continued as I pursued and achieved several degrees in various fields, yet the most rewarding education. yet the most rewarding education has come from my involvement right here in our community. Through years of dedicated service on numerous boards and committees such as the Budget Advisory Committee here in the city, and the General Plan Community Advisory Committee, I have been equipped with the knowledge and experience necessary to serve effectively, um, on our city council. My role on the California Transportation Commission Inter-Agency Equity Advisory Committee has further deepened my understanding of infrastructural needs and funding mechanisms which are vital for Rialto's growth. Today, I stand before you as a candidate for the vacant seat on this city council, not as a politician, but as a fellow citizen who shares your dreams and concerns for our city. Together, we have witnessed the potential of Rialto to become a beacon of prosperity and opportunity in the Inland Empire. I am committed to nurturing this potential into reality by focusing on key issues such as infrastructure improvements, housing, health, and safety, and advocating for our small businesses. As a mother of two incredible teenagers who are scholars in our local schools and educator, past and future business owner, I am deeply invested in the future of our city by enhancing the quality of life for all residents and creating a community where everyone can thrive. I believe we can make lasting impacts that will benefit generations to come, I am ready to be a team player.
Thank you very much, uh, the first question will be by council member Ed Scott.
Good evening Ms. Gonzalez.
Good evening.
And welcome, and thank you for all you do. Um, I, I have a couple of questions, they might be a little tough.
Okay.
It can be a little different than I, I did the rest, but, um, you, you currently are employed by the Center for Community Action and Environmental Justice, correct?
Correct.
And you are the executive director?
I am.
Okay, you, you're familiar with the fact that your organization has sued a number of developers and the city of Rialto?
Correct.
Okay, do you see any conflict between that and serving as a city council member?
Uh, not in the future, I believe that in the past, uh, when we have engaged in those types of situations, where there were egregious situations, I don't foresee any further litigations coming forward in the future, therefore not seeing any, um, conflicts of interest coming. Also because I don't foresee myself, um, I, I see myself seeking other future opportunities in my job.
Okay, um, but you intend to, to remain at CCAJ?
At the moment, yes.
Um, the other thing, I know, uh, everybody that is on this list that ran for office, I pulled their seven hundred statements.
Okay.
Are you familiar with seven hundred statement?
Yes.
Um, that's a statement of, uh, of economic, uh, your holdings, uh, income, et cetera. I noticed that yours was only one page and did not include income or any assets, is there a reason for that?
Uh, well I don't own any property or have any of the type of income to report.
Okay, alright, great, just a question I had.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my final question for you is, obviously you've been here a long time, so you see some good things that have happened in the city, and, and you and I kinda have a little bit of a communication relationship where we, we do communicate with each other even though we may not always agree. So, but I'd like to hear from you tonight, what you think the city has done a good job at, and what you're proud of the city council and the city for doing, and then what you think we've done a bad job at, and, and be straight up.
Yeah, no absolutely, of course, um, obviously the city has done, uh, good things, ob- obviously, if not, residents will not be living here, right? We've seen growth in population, um, in the last decade, and therefore that means that we are doing something good. And I think the Renaissance is a great example, uh, we have provided good opportunity, uh, for small businesses to come into our communities. Uh, I think that the downtown, uh, development, uh, has improved a little bit, but it could be better. And I think there's great potential there, and I, I see more small business opportunities that can come there. And I know that, uh, in talking to a lot of residents, they would love to seek opportunities in, in coming together to create a good development for the downtown area, and have entrepreneurship opportunities there. I do believe that, as we also have increased the opportunities on the south side in the Rialto marketplace, and, uh, the housing opportunities such as the condominiums on Foothill Avenue and, uh, and both, um, by, I wanna say Cactus and Acacia now, we have seen an increase of, of, you know, other types of income opportunities in housing. And I've seen a tremendous job with the staff in, in providing the Reno numbers that we have to meet by the state to provide those, uh, different types of housing opportunities for different income levels of our residents. And, and I think that has been a good job by the staff and council and residents coming together, and therefore showing a, a good progressive growth in our community, and I think that there's, uh, room for growth there. Um, however, I do think that we have lacked, uh, opportunities to include our communities to come together and provide more input into the decisions that the city is making. I think that, uh, sometimes decisions are being made behind closed doors, and I think that we should allow community to come together and, and provide more opportunities. Right now, a perfect example, the Locust, uh, and, and West Coast warehouse that we are negotiating as we speak, you know, is a perfect example of when community is allowed to come together and provide input in the decision-making, we are able to provide a good community benefit package where it's a win-win for both developer, community, and city as a whole, where we can have a win-win situation for everybody, and I think the community and the council can allow for those opportunities to come more, and that's where I've seen a lack of, and we can provide those more.
Thank you, good answers.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, next I'll call on council member Andy Katusidis. Thank you, first off, thanks for all your work in the community, and, uh, I'd like you to just highlight some of your biggest accomplishments with our youth, our seniors, and in our business community.
Yeah, so, thank you for that question, so in our youth, I am a very active parent, um, in the Rialto Unified School District. I am a proud co-founder of Alianza Latina, which is a parent, uh, Latino group that enhances and provides, uh, uh, knowledge of the rights of parents and how they can seek opportunities for their youth, whether it's, uh, fast bus support, or, uh, trade, you know, support for their kids to, if they don't wanna go to college, they can seek other trade opportunities for, for our kids that have special needs, uh, where they can get that support systems for their kids, um, you know, so they can become successful. And so with that wide range of resources that we have created through that program, or, or that, uh, organization, we have seen an enhancement of youth opportunities within many schools and many, uh, bridges that have been built between the administrative staff and the school staff and the parents, where we have seen a growth of kids seeking opportunities for, um, higher education. And then with the seniors, I work a lot with the, uh, groups that are, um, in our city right now. I know we have an amazing, um, group led by Maricela Ferguson, which is, um, the, i.e. seniors, I forgot her name, the name of her group, but we provide a lot of resources and we help her fundraise money to not only provide, uh, food, ca- uh, care packages, but also, uh, survey the seniors, so like during the holidays, or during the summer months when they're, you know, having heat events, we can, uh, give them rights to their doctor's appointments, or to their, um, uh, if they're needing to go to the cooling centers, we can provide those resources, or even internet, believe it or not, they're learning how to use their computers, or we show them how to use their phones to, um, uh, learn how to do their doctor's appointments, and stuff like that, so through my organization and in partnership with Maricela's group and other groups in, in the city and the telacous, we have been able to provide those resources. And with the veterans, um, we just, you know, uh, br- uh, bridge both the youth and the seniors, um, and provide those resources with the veterans, so we, we don't do a lot of work with the veterans in, in my experience, because, um, we kinda hand off that work to the experts, uh, but my work has been more with the youth and, and the seniors for sure.
Thank you. Next I'll call in council member Carla Perez.
Thank you, welcome, thank you for being here, um, I knew of you, you know, my previous, um, term here on, on council, and, uh, uh, I know other candidates brought up a great point that sometimes people don't know, um, why we do what we do s- at, at, at times, and we all have to work together and agree to disagree, and I didn't get to know you until after the election when we spoke, and you have, you know, great, um, ideas, you've done a lot of great work, so thank you for that. Um, and so, um, with that, what is, uh, one significant thing that you would like to accomplish in as a council?
Uh, so I have many, but I think one thing that stands out for me is infrastructure. I think that, right now, the city has a great potential to go into, you know, what we call the twenty-first century, uh, infrastructure-wise with providing, you know, more charging stations, solar energy, that green energy future that we're all looking forward to, and, uh, with opportunities with the IRA money and infrastructure money that's coming down, uh, through the federal government and the state funding. Uh, we just got news that, uh, Governor Newsom announced that we are not gonna be in a deficit this year, and so with the partnerships that I have with our state senators, state legislators, and, uh, our congressional and senator, uh, US senators, uh, representatives, we can bring those, uh, fun, uh, funds to our communities, and with the relationships that I have built with private, uh, partners that are already doing those green energy, uh, good jobs that can come into our communities, we can build that infrastructure that is so desperately needed. And I know there's a lot of conversations with our community that they love the idea of bringing, um, broadband to our community, providing, you know, this, uh, idea of free wifi, I know, um, Congressman Baca had mentioned it many times during his campaign, that they love this idea of providing, you know, more access to wifi into our communities, and, and in order for us to do that, we need to bring those funds, and we need to bring those jobs to our community to be able to accomplish that. And also our, our roads, our, our water infrastructure, our, you know, utilities, how can we underground most of our utilities when, uh, it's so desperately needed during this climate change impacts that we're facing as we speak right now with the winds, right? Um, so we need funding for that, and I think with the partnerships that I have built over the years with a lot of these, um, leaders that are on top of us, we can achieve that and bring those, those desperate dollars that we, um, need, so we can really fix the infrastructure and go into that green twenty-first century world that we, that we deserve in Rialto. So I think we can make it happen.
Thank you, and I have another question, um, you know, you being an activist for so many years, and again, you know, it was brought up by our other candidates that, you know, sometimes we, there's certain things that we have to do, and we have to communicate why we do them. So, um, you being somebody who has been an activist for so many years and has built a group of people that support, you know, and, and agree with your, um, take on things, how would you handle a situation whereas on council, you know, you, there's certain things that we have to get done, and it contradicts with something that you've been advocating for, for so many years?
Yeah, so I, I've been in, in situations already, um, I know, I, I think an example that I can provide, um, being in the Transportation, uh, Commission, and in, in the, in the work that I do in environmental justice where I actually, uh, supported a warehouse in Harupa Valley called the Rio Vista Project, and I, you know, I, a lot of my partners and, and fellow activists were really upset, but we were able to create such a great community benefit package where we were able to give back five hundred acres of land back to the Kish Nation, and, and build, uh, housing and commercial and other, uh, desperately needed infrastructure in the city of Harupa Valley, and we negotiated that, uh, with the community, not behind closed doors, but, you know, with, with the staff, with the right stakeholders, um, in, in, in the city chambers, and then we brought it forward, you know, we all supported the project, and a lot of people were upset with me, but it was the right thing to do. And so as long as we have the right people and we create these roundtables where we're talking to the right stakeholders, and, and we have these win-win, uh, resolutions and, and community benefit packages, I think, you know, when we have to call the, the right decision, the right decision has to be made, and we can't make everybody happy all the time, but as long as it benefits the community as a whole, I think we can make it happen, and I can work with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna, I, I have a couple of questions, uh, one is, uh, what is the one thing that you hope to accomplish during your time on the city council if you were to be selected?
Ooh, I would like to accomplish so many things, but I think, uh, one of the biggest thing that community has been screaming at us is that they wanna be included, so I, I would love to bring like the area command meetings back with, you know, in partnership with our police department, create some type of like state of the city event where we, like, community's just feeling included. So, if, you know, as a council, as a team, if we can come up with some type of like event or something where community just feels like they're getting, uh, some type of update of, of the condition, or, or the state of, of where our city's at, and how we're gonna move forward, and what's the plan? What's the strategic plan of our city in the next five or ten years, and give that plan to our community, so then they can provide their input and feel included in these decisions, and if we're able to give that to our community, I think they're gonna feel so empowered, and they're gonna feel so engaged, that we're gonna get rid of this voter apathy that we're seeing in our community right now, so if we're able to come up with some type of event such as a state of a city, and bring back these area command meetings, and, and maybe some workshops where, and, and the, um, oh my gosh, we had an amazing, uh, class, I forgot the class right now, the, the, yeah, the Institute of Progress, that was a great, you know, um, engagement, uh, class that we used to provide for our community, something where our community's feeling empowered, so I wa- I would like to work with you all to bring something like that back so our community's feeling included, and we can, you know, get rid of this voter apathy that we have right now.
Uh, what do you see as the most significant challenge facing Rialto now and in the future?
Ooh, difficult challenge, I think internally is our op-ed, uh, you know, our unfunded liabilities. I think we need to, again, through a strategic plan, we need to figure out how we're gonna be sustainable and, and create, uh, sustainable funding to, you know, take care of those unfunded liabilities without taxing the heck out of our residents, and, and see how we can work with our private partners such as, you know, our warehouses and, and other, uh, private corporations that are, you know, doing business in our city, and see how we can come with a one-win solution so we can create a sustainable, uh, mechanism of funding, so we can resolve that situation, 'cause in the long run, I think that can bankrupt our city, and so we have to create a system where we can, um, you know, take that, get that taken care of without having to tax our residents more.
In reference to economic development, how would you think that we should incorporate small businesses in helping us develop and grow, uh, a lot more small businesses that would bring in additional revenue to the city of Rialto?
So, uh, again, with the partnerships that I have built with our state and, and le- um, and federal leaders, uh, there are many grant opportunities that our city, uh, staff can apply. Right now, they're offering, um, I believe there's about fifteen to, uh, thirty thousand dollars to startup businesses. Or we could do like the front end, if, if, if businesses that are already in place, they can, they need a help, you know, to fix up their, their business, and, uh, maybe they need help, you know, making, um, their next payroll or something, we can provide some type of grant, uh, mechanism or funding, uh, to help our small businesses, but also partner with our organizations such as H, H S B C, um, and others, uh, other nonprofits that'll do a lot of work with our small businesses, 'cause they're the experts. And so until we bring them to the table and they can provide their expertise and advice to us, we can, um, you know, uh, then come up with ideas, again, it's, it's about bringing people as, on the roundtable and creating the strategic plan, uh, so we can bring these dollars, but also how do we utilize them to start supporting and uplifting entrepreneurship, um, you know, especially with our youth in our high schools, there's a lot of high school students that wanna start their businesses, but they don't know how. And then we have a lot of community members that also wanna start their business, but they don't know how, or they don't have the resources on how to start it, and so we need to bring the experts to, to help us provide those resources. And we can bring the money with the partners that we have with the, with the leaders and bring those funds in.
Okay, thank you, what direction do you feel that the council should be going in, in helping the city move forward?
I think right now we have to take sort of a, well I can't say pause, because obviously things need to run, and, and we have to, you know, uh, make thing, people need to get paid and do things, right? Uh, services need to be provided to our communities, but I, I think we need to do a comprehensive general plan update. I know we just went through our environmental justice update, and our land use, and, and, and our safety plan... I know we just went through our environmental justice update and our land use and, and, and our safety plan and everything. But I think we really need to take a comprehensive look into our general plan update and really look at our land use and, and, and really take a deep dive and, and talk to our, our safety law enforcement, uh, leaders and, and really see what is really needed for our, our departments. So, then we can learn what all the needs are for every department so we can move forward and develop some, some sort of strategic plan for the next ten years. Because we really are in desperate need to learn what the real, the, really what the needs are. I feel like we're just throwing Band-Aids at the problems, but we're not being strategic about it. So, I think we need to take a pause and really find out what the, what the real immediate needs are and then start addressing those and figure out what the funding mechanisms are gonna be. So, we can figure out how to, how are we gonna be sustainable? Bring in good jobs, bring in the, you know, the next future, uh, twenty-first century, you know, green energy jobs and, and energy infrastructure, but also addressing those immediate needs. And I think we can only do that if we could create a comprehensive general plan update.
Thank you. Uh, now I'll allow you to have a two-minute closing statement if you wish.
Yeah, well, you know, I've, this is my second time running for city council. I know I'm, for this opportunity, I'm going after the vacancy. Uh, but you all know, um, I love this city dearly. Uh, I am here for the long run and I will keep trying if I have to. And Sunday is my birthday, so it would make me so happy and it would be the best present um, to be, uh, the next councilwoman of the city of Rialto and, and just be an amazing team player with you all. And I look forward to, to working, um, with each and every one of you to make our city the best city in the inland empire, for sure. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Last candidate that had put in the application for, um, interview.
We have one candidate that, that did not show up, but put in her, uh, resume, and that's Lupi Gamacho, right?
Lupi Gamacho was ill. That's the reason she did not show up.
Right.
So, you had a candidate that put in, which was number eight, did a no-show, but Lupi was ill.
Okay, is she here?
She's ill. No.
Okay. Uh, so what we'll do now is take a, uh, two-minute or five?
Two, five, whatever.
Well, between two to five-minute break and then we'll adjourn and come, I mean, not adjourn, but come back and then discuss, uh, the candidates that we feel, uh, that we would like to select, if there's any. We'll do that at that point. So, at this point, we'll, uh, take just a, okay. Motion's been made to take a two to a five-minute break.
Second.
Seconded by Carla. Any opposition? Hearing none. We'll take a two to five-minute break. Reconvene the, uh, break that we were on, uh, to discuss the fifteen candidates that applied for the position. One was, uh, could not come because she was ill, and that's Wadalupe Gamacho. But she did submit her, uh, resume as one of the fifteen to be considered. So, at this point, uh, well-
Mr. Mayor, also, uh, number eight, Elvis Garcia, did not come.
Not show up.
Yeah, so there's two.
Yeah.
Well, it's a fifteen, so.
Eight and, eight and eleven.
Number eight and twelve.
Right, okay. Elva Garcia and, and their resumes are there.
Yes, yes.
We could consider all, uh, all fifteen. It's up to us to decide at this point. We'll, uh, open it up for hopefully, uh, discussion in terms of, uh, what candidates that we feel should be, uh, the top three, the top two, the top one. Or just, uh, say that we could also, we had the alternative, if I'm correct, uh, with the attorney's advice, is that we could, uh, select, uh, the top three or top five and maybe come back, uh, at another point and then decide which of those that we would like to select as the final candidates. Is that correct, uh?
Okay. Mayor, the council has a lot of freedom in how you want to set this up. You can shorten the list. You can pick a person tonight. You can think on it. It really depends what the collective council members want to do, how you wanna go about it.
Like, I'll open it up for any discussion. Uh, it, uh, Councilman, no?
It's Scott.
Mr. Mayor, um, I, I just wanna make a comment that I, I think, very frankly, all the candidates were great. We had a really good candidate selection list. Um, and unfortunately, we can only pick one person. But I, I would say that I, I see the potential of a lot of commissioners, maybe an employee or two. Um, but just, uh, a lot of people that seem very interested in the city and that, uh, we should definitely be considering for commission spots, uh, because we are in desperate need of commission revamps, especially the planning commission. So, um, I'm very pleased with the, the candidates that we had tonight. A couple of them were nervous, but, uh, we all read their resumes and, uh, they have very extensive resumes. And I thought it was a very excellent list of individuals.
Thank you. Any other comments from, uh, members of the council?
I, I just wanna summarize and kinda echo with the, with, uh, Councilmember Scott. We had a, a, a group of great candidates, I think. Uh, please give yourselves a round of applause because it's, it was really a, a, a big effort. No? You don't wanna give yourselves an applause? Uh, you guys all are highly qualified and I think that anybody that this board, uh, makes a decision for, whether it's tonight or some other night, I, I think will, will work well with us and will be a great candidate and will be a good public servant here in the city of Rialto.
Okay.
Um, I too would like to say that. It's, it's very tough, um, because everyone has such, you know, great experience, knowledge. You brings, you know, you're so invested in the community and, um, you know, I, I don't know how my colleagues feel. I mean, if I had to pick a top five, I'd probably have to go with that because it's, it's such a tough decision to make, um, based on, you know, the, the candidates we have. But, um, you know, I'd like to get input from my colleagues and see if anyone wants to move forward with an appointment and we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, I'd also like to make a statement. First of all, I wanna thank all fifteen of the candidates that submitted, uh, their application. I wanna thank those that personally came in for the interview, uh, and, uh, say thank you very much. I believe that we had excellent candidates that gave a lot of good input in reference to the reasons to be on the, on the council and then how some of them would work with us as a team. And, uh, and that's very important in terms of, uh, where we go in terms of the future is that we need, uh, individuals that are willing to work collaboratively with us, have transparency, have integrity, and are willing to move the city forward. Uh, having said that, I'll open it up to any member of the council that would like to either, uh, as a member, uh, Carla Perez indicated, there's, we could either go with selecting one or selecting two or three or five and coming back at another meeting. And that's, uh, will be up to us as we continue this discussion here tonight. Uh, hopefully that we'll be able to come to some kind of conclusion, uh, shortly because we've got a meeting that's coming up on January the fourteenth that that member then can be on the council. So, this way we can begin to look at the appointments of commissions, uh, uh, not just the commissions that individuals will be on, but also the committees that members of the council will be at. So, they can be active in taking part in some of those meetings that will be going on. And that's the only urgency that we would have because there are certain committees that are beginning to meet now. And we need to, uh, uh, appoint, and that's gonna be up to the discretion, and I state this, that's gonna be up to the discretion of the mayor to, uh, submit the names of individuals for the, the positions that the council members will be appointed. And it'll be, uh, ratified by the council if they choose to. And if not, then, uh, the council, in reference to the commissions, uh, will be able to give input in reference to, uh, who some of those bodies, uh, will be selected. Because we have a lot of vacancies and I think the urgency is, is important in both areas. So, this way we can all begin to work together in the interest of the city. So, having said that, the mic's open. Do anybody that wants to give any input or say? Mr. Mayor, I would like to see us move ahead with an, an appointment tonight. Is there any recommendation then for an appointment since one member of the council indicated that? Is there any objection with, with that? Hearing none? Then we'll, uh, begin that process and look towards, uh, appointment of one individual? Do we have any recommendations from the members of the council?
As stated, um, it is a very difficult decision, um, and everyone here is entitled to, um, you know, their own, uh, suggestion on appointment. Um, I would like to move forward with mine and that would be, uh, Edward Montoya, Jr.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Who did you say?
Is there any other nominations that members would like to see? Seeing no objection, motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Oh, who, who's second? I didn't get that.
I did.
Oh, you did. Uh, roll call. Uh, Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Carisadas.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Baca.
Aye.
So, Edward A. Montoy would be the sitting council, junior.
Right.
Assistant junior.
Then I, I would just like to take this, this privilege. I, I wish we would have just, uh, you know, I, I went with the, the motion, but I wish we would have just gone back to having the third person that, uh, was the highest vote getter, uh, be selected. But we didn't have a process in place at that point. Uh, and hopefully that we can develop a process, uh, coming up shortly, uh, in, in terms of the future. This way, if there's any vacancies, uh, we don't have to go through this and we can automatically then just, uh, appoint that person that's next in line. Because I feel that the candidates that did, did apply for the, uh, the position itself, there was seven city council people that took the interest to file for the position. Uh, some paid their, their fees in terms of the statement of qualifications. And then those others, uh, decided to run and began to campaign and tried to talk to people in the community about, uh, the importance of them being selected to the council. These are very well-deserving individuals, uh, that, uh, that hopefully in the future that, that we don't have to go through what we just did now. Because the person that, that was the highest vote getter of those was Anna Gonzalez, uh, that even beat one of our, uh, members that ran for, uh, mayor in terms of the total number of, of votes that she received. And then there was another, uh, candidate that I thought was very well, uh, along with the others, uh, our past, uh, city manager, uh, as well. Uh, that was an excellent- our past city manager as well, that was an excellent candidate for this position, but it was a very difficult decision. But it's a decision that we have to make in terms of being part of a team. And I think that's important in reference to the decisions and how we go forward in moving the city forward and working in the best interest of the city and all of us collaborating and working together. With that, I want to say congratulations to Edward Montoya in the selection to be the next member of the city council. What you then will be done is at the next meeting, you will be sworn in. Edward, are you here? Would you want to come up and say?
Well, I was hoping to do it before then. I was hoping to do it before then.
Did you do it tonight? Do it tonight?
Yeah, before the, I wanted to do it before the meeting started.
The clerk can do it anytime before the meeting starts. All we need to do, I know everybody's checked that they're a Rialto resident. We also have to just verify that they're a registered voter in Rialto. Once we've verified those two things, she can swear in at any time and he can be ready to go for the regular council meeting.
Yes, so I need to do a couple of refer checks on some things and then, but for the meeting, I wanted to do it before the meeting where he can be full-
Okay, but he can't do it tonight.
Where I could, no, I need to check some things.
Okay, so then what we'll do then is check the verification in terms of his status to make sure that he is a resident of the city of Rialto and what other requirements are set forth by the city. But let's, I don't know if it would be appropriate to have him say just a few words.
Oh, you if I were to?
At this point, since you've been selected, Edward Montoya, would you like to come out and say a few words before we adjourn?
Am I addressing here or? So I, again, I thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to present myself today and I thank you for taking the time to read my application, my resume, and taking a look at what I've done in my past and what I'm currently doing now. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone, for allowing me this opportunity. You won't, you won't be disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
With that, do I hear a motion to adjourn the special meeting? A motion been made by Andy Cudicides.
Second.
Do I hear a second by member Carla Perez? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none? Meeting is adjourned.